Welcome to the regular meeting of the Cape Coral City Council. Today is August 16th, 2023. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the invocation and pledge allegiance by Councilmember Welsh.
We come here tonight to celebrate the beauty of this city, the beauty of the weather that we have, and the beauty of the people who live here. We celebrate the fact that we have a government that listens to its people and which we have a voice, in which we can speak and make suggestions. We celebrate tonight a government in which we can elect our officials and our heard.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for riches and peace, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Gunter?
Here.
Councilmembers Cosden?
Here.
Cummings?
Here.
Hayden?
Here.
Long?
Here.
Shepherd?
Here.
Steinke?
Here.
Welsh?
Here.
Eight present.
Madam City Clerk, do we have a council member requesting to appear remotely?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilmember Steinke.
Is there a motion to allow Councilmember Steinke to appear remotely?
Motion to allow.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam City Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
No.
Shepherd?
No.
Steinke?
Yes.
Welsh?
Yes.
Cosden?
Aye.
Cummings?
No.
Four ayes, four nays.
You didn't call me.
I apologize. Gunter?
No.
Four ayes, four nays, motion failed.
Okay, we'll move on to item five, is changes to the agenda. Consent agenda, item 9A5, Resolution 199-23, has to be withdrawn at the request of City Management. Apparently, this had to do with the charter schools and this item wasn't discussed during our meeting last night, so it'll have to come back at a later time. That's the only change I have.
Motion to approve the agenda with the change.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Item six is recognitions and achievements. Six A is community recognition award. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we have a community recognition award for Skylar Sosi. One of Cape Coral's own local dancers has showcased exceptional talent and dedication to her craft by achieving remarkable success on the global stage. Skylar Sosi recently competed for Team USA in the 2023 World Acrobatic Championships in Monterrey, Mexico. Having just turned 13, she was the youngest competitor in the team acrobatic dance division, and she placed 17th in the world. She studies dance and theater at Norfolk Myers Academy for the Arts and takes lessons at Studio Eight in Cape Coral, where her routine was choreographed by Bridie Clevenger. Skylar has been dancing since age two, and she has been competing in dance for the past five years. She is trained in the acrobatic dance, ballet, jazz, contemporary, and musical theater. She is also an honors student and Girl Scout, and Skylar's success is a testament to her hard work and skill, as well as the rich fabric of the arts in our Cape Coral community. Congratulations Skylar on this stellar achievement, placing 17th in the world. We have an award for you, is a community recognition award.
Yeah, congratulations and great job. You're welcome. Okay, we move on to item seven, is approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from a regular meeting of July 26, 2023?
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from a regular meeting of August 2, 2023?
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight is citizens' input time, a maximum of 60 minutes, except for the input of citizens on matters concerning city government. Three minutes per individual. We'll utilize my podium, the podium to my left, your right. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward.
Good afternoon. My name is Paul Benasia, and I reside on Pelican Boulevard, just north of Rotary Park. Thank you for an opportunity to speak this afternoon. I'm opposed to the proposed Redfish Point development on the wetlands south of Rotary Park. I would like to thank Mayor Gunter and Councilman Steinke for their remarks two weeks ago. I did want to address the point that was made, then, that the landowners have the right, like any landowner, to change the land use and zoning on their land, that they are currently following the process. We, those opposed to Redfish Point, understand this, and that it has not reached the council for consideration yet, but is in the works. We do not know when this will occur. We are taking the approach that we are, like we're preparing for a hurricane. Don't wait till the last minute to safeguard your house and family. Plan ahead and act ahead. I do want to point out that besides the land use and zoning changes that are needed to occur, the landowners need to address the issue that there is no egress or ingress to their property from a suitable road. It is landlocked to the north and west by Cape Coral's Rotary Park, and on the east by homes on Southwest First Court. You can see in the slide that I would like to make you aware that there is in place a section of Cape Coral Rotary Park where there is a conservation easement that was created on July 29, 1991, by Lee County and the Florida Department of Environmental Protection that stretches across the whole property. That's the area in pink. In this document, it states that the easement is forever, and specifically stipulates no roads can be built on the conservation easement. I would ask you, when this comes up, to have the city attorney determine if this is even legal to void an existing conservation easement. We who are opposed to Redfish Point respectfully request that you deny the landowner's request for an easement, and therefore keep the value of the 350 acres within the possibility of it being purchased by a conservation organization for a negotiated value, and therefore everyone wins, the realtor, the landowner, and the people of Cape Coral. In closing, what I have heard from experts and residents is the site has more value to the citizens of Cape Coral if it is left undisturbed and undeveloped. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak for citizens' input? Please come forward. Don't be shy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Richard Aiken. I'm here representing the applicant, which is on item, Agenda Item 10B1, that's ordinance 51-23. It's the Acorn and Trotta Future Land Use Map Amendment. We intended to ask for additional time for our presentation and discussions with staff before the meeting here. Staff asked us to come up and tell council that we intend to ask for additional time. We'd like to ask for a total of 20 minutes instead of five minutes for our presentation, so I wanted to let you know that now and make that request, because staff's presentation is before ours, so that's the purpose of me standing up here.
Thank you, and I think maybe we'll address that once we get to that item.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Simone Ferrater, and I'm the owner of Cape Coral Kayak. Thank you very much for the opportunity to come and speak with you today. We currently have a concessionary agreement with Cape Coral Park System to provide kayak rental from Serena Vista Park in northwest Cape Coral. The park provides a safe and family-friendly floating kayak launch structure, and just to clarify, there is not a boat ramp in the park location. For the last two years, we have been working in a partnership with the park system to provide kayaking services from the park year-round during park hours. We're a neighborhood and a family-friendly company. Our goal is to continue to work as a strategic partner with City of Cape Coral for complement and strategic plan to increase tourism and provide a small business grow. From kayak rental revenues we provide with the city consumption or fuel to our trucks at the local gas stations, referrals of visitors to local business, including restaurants, hotels, rental properties, and stores across the city, access to eco-tourist activities and local kayak rentals to residents of Cape Coral and the new Seven Island area, the city also benefits from local city taxes paid by our business and park license fee. In summary, our goal is to complement your strategic plan to promote tourists and increase city revenues without compromising local neighborhood traffic. Here are several options we would like to recommend. Number one, recommend against the resolution as written to allow vendors to operate for all city park locations in the city of Cape Coral. Recommend an amendment to the resolution to allow Cape Coral Kayak to continue to operate from Serena Vista Park kayak launch location. Again, we're a strong partner of tourists and a strong partner of local business. Let's try and figure out a way on how we can continue to move forward. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
And I just want to follow up behind Simone.
State your name, sir.
Steve Bukner with Cape Coral Kayak. Simone and I are both business owners, or owners of the business. We've been operating, like Simone said, for the last two years in Serena Vista Park. The area loves us being there. We've become really part of the community. We're helping that part of, you know, the northwest Cape kind of expand activities for people that live in the area. One of the most important draws to the park are the manatees that are there in the wintertime. They're beautiful. If you go to our website or our Google reviews, you'll see we have roughly 200 reviews and beautiful photos of families that come here, you know, from all over the country to enjoy what we offer to the city. So I feel, you know, our service, along with some of the other kayak companies, you're going to hear from one here in just a moment, that also works with us at the park. So we're just hoping that you'll consider making an exception. There's really no other place to go kayaking and see manatees in the area other than in Fort Myers at Manatee Park. So we want to keep that business here and keep the business local in the Cape. Thanks, guys. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Diana. My husband and I own Gulf Coast Kayak. Since 2012, we've been active members of this community. We've owned and operated our business in Mat Lachey and Cape Coral, where we provided tours, rentals, lessons, educational programs, as well as community engagement projects such as Mangrove Mania, Monolith Madness, Shoreline Cleanups with Keep Lee County Beautiful for over 11 years. We've seen over, I could say about over 40,000 guests, both domestic and international, over the 11 years that we've done business here. We lost our shop in Mat Lachey, unfortunately, due to Hurricane Ian, but thanks in great part to a partnership with Cape Coral Parks and Rec. We've been fortunate enough to continue operating by using the kayak launch at Serena Vista. This year alone, over 2,000 guests, both domestic and international, that we've been able to provide service for at that park. I did ask them to put this up, because I just wanted to make a note that Serena Vista Park has received over $1 million in tourist and development funds from TDC to both make up that kayak launch that we use, shoreline improvement, and bathrooms since 2017. So that is a beautiful park, and we're very fortunate, again, to be able to partner with the city to use it. So I'm here to ask the council, the city council, to allow for continuation of this partnership with Cape Coral Parks and Rec and our business, Gulf Coast Kayak, at Serena Vista Park, to accommodate tourists, so that we can promote and showcase the cooperative efforts of, and investments made by the TDC and keep tourism dollars in Cape Coral. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jim Nehaus, Cape Coral resident. I'm here, I'm in Gulf Coast Kayak and Cape Coral Kayak as well, but I'm here to provide further support for a special exception to allow the continuation of commercial waterfront activity at Serena Vista Park. I know that the decision is looming. I worked there as an ego guide for 10 years now and led thousands of tours through the mangroves, so I know firsthand how much things have changed there in the past year. I want to also thank the city for permitting Gulf Coast Kayak to operate out of the park at this time, because we are displaced from our location indefinitely from Hurricane Ian. Gulf Coast Kayak and myself have been, are currently co-developing a restoration plan with support from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, Coastal and Heartlands National Estuary Program, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, Keep County, I'm sorry, Keep Lee County Beautiful, Lee County Parks and Recs, and a Florida-based mangrove cultivating and planting company. I brought this map in to show the impacts to our area. This was created using normalized difference vegetation index to help distinguish between living and non-living vegetation. The darker areas, of course, have the higher mortality. These mangroves that you see, especially the ones in purple, took the brunt of the storm surge and really were very effective at sparing our Cape Coral from that area from utter destruction, which, you know, we saw in places like Mat Lachey and Fort Myers Beach. But I can assure you, having been there, you know, more than, I've made more than 200 trips up there this year, those shields are in a weakened state and in need. So we do have the experience working with Keep County, Keep Lee County Beautiful, and other organizations doing plantings in the past, both in that area of the northwest Spreader Canal and within a national wildlife refuge. And the goals of our plan go beyond just the habitat restoration and the fortification of the hurricane defenses, you know, for the city, but we also intend to engage residents and visitors in these efforts through the course of business operation. The green point on the map that we have displayed is Serena Vista Park, and as you can see, this is an ideal staging area for our planting and monitoring activities. I mean, you have our commitment. We care about the environment, and all we need is your support through a continued partnership at Serena Vista.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' input? Please come forward. Seeing none, citizens' input is now closed. Is there any council discussion on citizens' input? Okay, seeing none, I'm sorry, Councilmember Welsh.
Mr. City Manager, can you brief me on what we actually, as far as commercial activity? I thought kayaks were still included in it, or we got rid of everything altogether from parks?
Anything that did not have an agreement, Parks has been moving on terminating December 31st. So if there was an agreement, for example, like the boathouse that council's approved, obviously that is through the agreement. This arrangement was made, they were on, similar to the jet skis, they had, I believe, a two-year pilot program, but because of the discussion on commercial activity in parks, Parks has been moving to advise all of the vendors that December 31st would be the last day.
Okay, because I believe the issue we were having was more, you know, jet skis parking at the docks and staying there all day, not launching a kayak and not hosting stuff, so it might be something we can maybe put on a Cal meeting to discuss later, as far as kayaks go.
It's the same, I mean, they're bringing in the boats, they're parking, they're operating the business out of the park, so from a, it's a different type of vessel.
Okay.
Different, but the same canoe kayak ramp for the public has a commercial business utilizing it, bringing stuff. So we took that discussion that we had, and we've been applying it throughout the system.
Okay.
If you would like to reconsider that, we can absolutely bring another discussion forward.
Maybe in one of our one-on-one meetings, we can talk about it a little bit further, but not tonight. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other council discussion, we'll move on to item nine, is business. Nine A is the consent agenda. I'll now open up the consent agenda for council to pull any items. Councilmember Hayden.
Yeah, I'd like to pull item 9A, which is Resolution 20323.
Okay. Any other items that any council want to pull? Okay, seeing none. Do we have a motion to approve all of the items except for Resolution 203-23, which is number nine in the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, item nine, Councilmember Hayden, you pulled, so you had the floor.
Yeah, this is the item that, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. City Manager, that is setting a not exceed amount of $1 million to go out for bid or piggyback off an existing contract for the demolition of the yacht club. I had a couple of questions and wording in the resolution. It says the demolition of buildings. In the, what the ordinance has accomplished, it says a building, and in the summary, it calls for buildings. So is the demolition of the yacht club building and the Rotino Center, if it's plural? But there's some wording there that's contradicting itself.
Sure. I don't know if Paul's back there, maybe he can, maybe he's on it.
Yeah, he's back there. He was coming up, but he can probably answer that one.
Yeah, the intent of this is for all the buildings that are there. So it would be Rotino Center, Harbor Master Building, the ballroom, the ticket booth, the electric building, the pool area, the pump house. Correct.
And we're pretty confident that, how did we come up with the $1 million?
So we had some discussions with some demolition contractors on the price point in the market. We were given a number. We tallied up all of the square footages of all the buildings and the pool. Once those are done, then we had some restoration costs for filling in the area where the pool was, bringing it back to grade, and then, you know, restoring the area. So we put in some number there, plus some contingency for unknowns, because once you get underground, you don't know what you're going to be in.
And then, Mr. Kling, since you put the timeline together, are we still on course for what we look at in terms of end of November, construction notice to proceed, and end of February, demolition, deconstruction, preservation, complete, three-month duration? Has that changed at all?
Paul Kling, Director of capital improvements, actually, as far as total schedule, end of, we could, again, this could, if we piggyback, this could save 30 days, so end of January 2024 could be the three-month duration to actually remove everything. So if we piggyback, we can possibly shave off 30 days on the schedule.
And then documents will be ready for bidding. We're still looking at the end of?
Documents are still ready at the end of September, then the end of October, the award executed by the city manager, again, with the piggyback, then end of October, still we can just go right to notice to proceed, then three months to actually do the work.
Okay, all right.
And if we went with the traditional design bid build and then have to come back to council, then we have time to get it on the agenda and schedule. So by getting the pre-approval, as long as we, we're not asking to waive any procurement processes, we're still going to follow them. We just don't have to bring it back and wait for the timeline, the agenda delays for that. So we would pick up a month getting, so rather than starting November timeframe, we would be starting in October timeframe, so four or five weeks.
And then the stakeholders groups or group, I understand that there may be a bigger group going through and a smaller group going through, it was still scheduled for a week from today?
Yeah, so we have, we pulled the lottery. We were able to, I'm thankful the auditor was able to assist us, so the auditor actually ran the lottery for us, contacted all the individuals. When they spoke to the youth council member, as well as the historical society member, because of the day, and the time being in the middle of the day, the student obviously had to be in school, and then the person had to be at work, so we set up, so we're going to have all of the lottery folks go on one day, and then we set up another time when both the youth council and the historical person could go, so we can get all that input. But it's going, it's going.
Do we know that day of when they'll go through, the two people?
Do I know the day?
Yeah.
I don't, Paul, do you have the day?
The plan is, once we go through with the 823 with the majority, then we'll schedule a day or two later or the following week to try to get those two individuals and go through the same process, and get everybody's, you know, input.
And are we, I know we had several people that couldn't do it, and we had to re-go back to lottery and redraw, but are we, do we have commitments for everyone from that stakeholder group to do it, or are we still working through that process?
Melissa, let me ask the communications manager, she's been on this.
I sat so far away. Good evening, Melissa McGee, Communications Manager for the City of Cape Coral. So far, we actually have 11 stakeholders who are confirmed and definitely committed to next week, and I think we just have one that we're waiting on a response on, so it looks good so far.
All right, thank you. With that, I will make a motion to deny.
Is there a second? Second. Okay, so there's a motion to deny, is there any other discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
No.
Shepherd?
No.
Welsh?
No.
Cosden?
No.
Cummings?
No.
Gunter?
No.
One aye, six nays, motion to deny failed.
Anybody else?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any other discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
No.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
If aye, remain motion carried.
Okay, let's move on to 9B, appointments and boards. We do not have any. 9C is unfinished business. We do not have any follow-up items for council listed. Council have any follow-up items? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 9D, is new business. D is council agenda rules and procedure discussion. I brought this forward so we could have a discussion regarding remote participation in our council meetings. I went back and reviewed our council agenda rules and procedure, which is basically the rules that we, as a council, have adopted regarding meetings, how the meetings are taking place, absences, orders of business, motions, resolutions, and so forth and so on. When you read the council agenda rules motions, resolutions, and so forth and so on. When you read the council agenda rules for procedure, there's nothing listed in the council rules for any type of policy regarding remote participation. I think if we are going to entertain that, there needs to be a policy in place so we know exactly what that policy is. Again, it's not listed in our rules. And since it's not listed in our rules, and I know that, you know, we have been allowing remote participation, but I think it's important that if we're gonna do that, we gotta put it in a policy form and stick it in our rules. I did reach out today to a variety of other organizations throughout Lee County. I reached out to the county board of commissioners. They do not allow remote participation in their council meetings. I reached out to the City of Fort Myers. They only allow remote participation in their workshops, not in their regular meetings. I reached out to the City of Sanibel. They do not allow remote participation. The Village of Astero, they do not allow remote participation. So there are the cities that I contacted here, here in Lee County regarding remote participation. Me personally, you know, if you look at our charter, we have one responsibility as a council member, and that's to come to our meetings. That's our, that's, that's what we're getting paid for. That's what we were elected to do. For me, if you're not in a condition or, or in a position to attend the meetings in person, then you probably shouldn't be participating remotely. So for me, I don't agree with the remote participation, but that's only me. We make decisions here as a council collectively. So I thought it was important that we had that discussion to see where that may, may lead us. Again, I, you know, I reached out, a lot of the other organizations that I contacted, they said, yeah, we used to do that during COVID, but not any longer. So, you know, the times of COVID, as far as the initial pandemic, has come and gone. So I think, you know, for me, I've re, I have participated in remote twice since I've been here in five and a half years. Both of those times, I was at Florida League of Cities. For me, the only reason that I think that we could, should be allowed to promote, to participate remotely is if we are on city business. That takes us away from our, that would be, for me, the, the only time that I think it should be. But again, I'm just one of eight. We'll have the discussion. But at some point, once we decide collectively as a body, we need to put it in written form and make sure that, that we follow whatever policies that we place upon ourselves. Councilmember Hayden.
Are you asking to develop that policy?
Well, I think that we, the way I read the rules of procedure, we're not even allowed to do that. We've been doing something that's not even-
Oh, okay.
-in our, in our own rules.
Well, but, but, and I'll ask the city attorney to, there, there's no legal reason for us to not allow remote participation.
That's exactly true. He told a majority of us, I believe.
Yeah, there is, there is no legal prohibition from allowing the remote participation as long as there is a quorum present physically.
And back in 2019, we actually did have a draft of an, of a resolution to allow remote participation for good cause, which included pretty much everything. But, let me finish. But at, at, at the end, that part was stricken from the rules and procedures, eliminating that particular section. And that resolution then went on to be approved, eight oh. I will agree with you. The most important thing we need to do is be at the meetings. But I think another most, another real important reason is for us to participate in the votes. I think the, our constituents, this community expects us to be voting on matters that impact our lives. And if a person can't be here, whether it's extraordinary reasons or whatever, that vote is crucial and important depending on where the council may stand. If we eliminate that voting process, I think we're hurting us, and I think we're hurting the community, and I think we're hurting our rights as a council member. So my opinion, my opinion only. I've only missed one meeting in two and a half years because of COVID, which is why it was enacted in the first place. Technology now makes it a lot easier for us to be able to do it. And a point of note here, we don't have an epidemic of people missing meetings. There was a time on past councils where you could pretty much look up here, and there might be a person missing a couple of times a month, maybe a different person. But you're right, it should be in our policy, whichever way it goes. I certainly wouldn't, at this point, support not allowing a person to participate remotely because of that voting, because of that voting factor. If we want to look at extraordinary circumstances, illness, any sort of disability that may not allow a person to participate, then, then we can look at that. But tonight bothered me that we actually, for probably the first time in the city's history, we didn't allow a person to participate in a meeting. That is absolutely unbelievably wrong to me. So we didn't have a basis to do that on. If this, if this is able to provide that, that's fine. I'll, I'll look forward to that debate moving forward. That's all.
And one other thing, since I don't see any lights on, the, you know, we have two individuals here in front of us, the city manager and the city attorney. We also have the city auditor. If she's not here, she's probably in the conference room. Oh, there she is. They're compelled to be here. They have a contractual, contractual responsibility. And to me, we have even a higher responsibility than them to be here. You lead by example. And so now I've got a bunch of lights on, so we'll go to those. Councilmember Shepherd.
I haven't been a fan of the council members calling out, I think, a lot. And to me, it's work ethic, responsibility, but not just that. We made a promise to the citizens of Cape Coral. When I ran for office, I was asked hundreds of times by people, you have your own business, Mr. Shepherd, you have a family, are you gonna be able to go to the meetings? And I promised them that I could handle the job, and I accepted the responsibility. And I've heard that from a lot of other people that ran for council that have won and didn't win, because they've all been asked the same questions. I've witnessed, since I've been a councilperson, people planning cruises and, you know, trips, knowing that they're gonna miss council meetings. With my family, I tell them to look at my city schedule, and if my wife wants to plan a trip or go do something, it's, it's gotta be around that. And that's the way I look at it. We're not working aisle ten at Home Depot, you know? We're running a city, and a lot of people look to us to be here and do our job, and to make sure we're here for our once-a-week meeting. I know there's other meetings as well. We're paid to do a job, and to have somebody call out every single time with all these different excuses, I mean, we, I've seen, I think it's been abused. And I don't, I don't, I think if you, if you can't make it in, you can't vote, and, and I think it's sad, because you're here to do a job, and people are looking up to you to represent them, and to, I don't see the mayor saying so-and-so can't make it because they decided to go on a cruise, or they decided to go to a wine tasting event, or whatever it is. I mean, so we, we never really know why people call out, but I think it's been abusive with certain people. And I've complained about it, because I don't feel, I feel what happens is it hurts us as a whole. When citizens, there's a lot of people that wa, it might not attend, but they watch. And I have citizens tell me all the time, oh, so-and-so called out again, so-and-so called out again, you know? But it doesn't just make that individual look bad, it's a team, makes the team look bad. That, that's how I see it. So I think we have a responsibility, and if you can't handle the job, then you should just resign, let someone else have the position that can give the time and dedication to doing the job right. So that's my feelings.
Councilmember Welsh?
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, is there anything legal-wise, as far as like the American Disabilities Act, that would require us to, to put something within this new ordinance resolution that we're making to make us compliant?
So as I understand it, this would be a procedural rule that you'd be looking to amend, assuming that there is, there is a unanimous decision as to what that will be. That could in fact be a factor, and that's something that I would have to really delve into to ascertain whether or not there would be something that would be triggered. I know that currently, whether it be Title VII or the protections under the ADA could be implicated. I don't know that, and I'm not about to say that definitively, but that's something that we would want to be mindful of, because it, it could impact us. I did, I did see that there was a movement to allow those protections in 2022 by the federal government. It never really took off, so I don't know if that will be an issue that will come forward. And it specifically addresses elected officials. So as we stand here today, I do not have a definitive answer, but depending on where the council goes, I will certainly provide you that legal guidance.
Yeah, I think before I make a decision or further comments, I want to make sure that we're at least doing what, what we're supposed to with this. Whether it be if we don't allow remote participation for X, Y, and Z reason, I'm okay with. But if by law, we're required to allow someone because of a disability act or some sort of procedure, that that's stated in this ordinance to whoever's crafting it, that, you know, that can be the only excuse used for missing a meeting, or that only, not the same excuse, but the only valid reason to allow remote participation. But as far as my opinion, I, I agree. If you're, if you're not here, it is a distraction. I think that a lot of times, the connectivity is an issue. Being able to speak what you want, we're often waiting and holding up. I like what the county does, where they allow remote participation during committee of the whole meeting, since there are discussions and not voting. I think we could keep that in the new crafted ordinance as well, that if someone wanted to do that, at least having their opinion. Yeah, I just want to make sure before we decide on this, that we don't have anything legally keeping us from, from, from hurting any sort of, you know, disability act. But yes, we're, we're here to do a job, and if you have to miss a meeting because of some reason, there's seven of, seven of us here that will pick up the slack and do it. So I'm not 100% opposed to this, but I just want to make sure we do it the right way. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Cummings?
Yeah, thank you. So going off of what Councilman Walsh is saying, if in case there is a disability act, then we continue on voting. I mean, I'm in agreement with you, Mayor. I'm a mom, I have a business, I have a lot of responsibility, but when I ran, I knew every Wednesday I had to be here, no matter what was happening. Now, if there's a serious emergency, I can understand that. But if it's just because you don't want to come in, or you've got something going on, or you want to go here or there, no. I mean, we took this position as a government position, and we, and we vowed and promised we'd be here on Wednesdays. It's part of the charter. If you can't do it, then you should not run, period. If you do it on an ongoing basis, it actually makes us look bad as a council, period. Mike Ilch is our city manager, our attorney. If they were zooming in once a month, I would be a little disgusted, to be honest with you. I want to see your body here in the presence with us and the rest of the community of Cape Coral. I think it's simple, and honestly, the charter doesn't ask for much. When I saw it, I was like, wow, once a week? That's it? This is a big city. Actually, we should be here more than once a week. We should be here quite often. But I know the pay isn't that, that good, but we did it because we wanted to help the city. We wanted to do what we ran on. You ran on saying, I'm gonna be there for you, so you need to be here for the people. It's on Wednesdays. It's not that hard. And yes, I agree with Councilman Shepherd. There are times I wanted to go back and see my daughter, but I couldn't do it, because I had to be here on a Wednesday. I have been crucified up here, but I still show up when I'm supposed to be here. So I don't make excuses. Now, if I'm sick, I'm not gonna come in to get everyone else sick, but I'm hoping that doesn't happen. Yes, I know you gave me the look, but it's a fact. It's a fact. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Councilmember Long?
Mr. Mayor, it's apparent to me that we've got some work to do, and we're getting a little off the rails here. Do you would suggest maybe asking for a second to, to work on this and bring something back? Or how do you suggest we proceed? I think that in light of the fact that we've got a significant agenda, and the city attorney needs some time to look over this, we're certainly gonna have to postpone it to a meeting in the future. I don't know how you'd like to do that, but that would be my suggestion.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney, how do you, how long, how much time do you need? I think kind of what I was looking for tonight is a consensus of whether we want to allow remote participation or not. And then if we are, then we'll have to probably have a discussion and try to define when that would be able to occur. Of course-
To answer, so I guess first and foremost, whether or not you do want to amend your rules is the-
Well, our, we'll, there's, right now, our rules do not even have in there that we're allowed to participate remotely.
Right, and there's no-
So there's no reason to amend anything to, if, if we're going not to allow it, because it's not in there.
Right, so where, where, where does the council want to go?
Well, the only counter to that would be then that could potentially be subjected to abuse, because then we could continue to just request that, and then it would be on a case-by-case basis. So the other end of that, in my opinion, we, I would prefer we didn't do that, for obvious reasons. And we either expressly prohibit it, or we would allow it. That would be my suggestion.
Right.
Rather than just leaving it off the slate, and then we can continue to just decide if you have enough people that they'll allow you to, this person appear remotely and the other person not to.
That would be my recommendation. If you're going to do it, then you would amend your rules to allow it. If you're not going to do it, then you would amend your rules to expressly identify that prohibition, recognizing that one little caveat, which I just need to confirm, that there won't be a concern with any other protections that may exist.
So for the sake of consensus, then, I would support including an express prohibition contingent on there not being any of the issues that you decided.
Okay. I don't see any, any other lights on, so why don't we just come on down the line here and get everybody's consensus. So we know the direction that, that the city man, or city attorney needs to go, and then, you know, then I could ask for a second to work on that. But Councilmember Cummings?
So what is the question?
The question is, do you want to allow remote participation?
No, I don't. Only if you have a workshop and you can't be here, or have a city business.
I would say yes on a committee of the whole without voting, and then I would prefer to no for a fact. And maybe if we do allow it, have it very specific as to the reason why. Like you had said, I'm at a Florida League of Cities meeting, or, you know, there's, I would, I would be more agreeable to it if we had some provisions lined up. So it wasn't just a call-in, but have a specific reason. Thank you.
And let's go back to yours, if we could. What was your response again?
If you're sick, I don't think you should participate in, period. But a workshop or of a city business, then absolutely.
All right.
I'll say yes with a caveat that, you know, there's a lot to explore and determine yet.
Okay. Mine's no.
Mine's no, and, and I think that we should, there shouldn't be for sick or anything like that. It should be, you get so many excuses. It should be, you get so many excuses a year.
Councilmember Cosd.
With certain circumstances, it should be allowed.
All right, so that sounds like a yes. So it looks like we have four noes, two yeses. Two of the noes are workshops, and two of the noes were just prohibition. One, two, three, four, five, six, and yours was no, so I forgot that. So I got five noes, two yeses, and out of the five noes, workshop only. And that would have been Councilmember Welsh and Councilmember Cummings. Right. So I guess maybe what I'll do is ask for a second to work on that, and maybe drive...
Second.
Two, two ways, how we kind of discussed here today, and then we can, we can bet that out later, maybe at a committee of the whole or something like that, and move from there. Now, as we go forward, and, you know, I'm just going to be quite honest with everybody. I think Councilmember Cosd had missed a couple weeks ago, Councilmember Stanky. You know, for me, I'm still going to be a no vote, so I just want to make sure everybody aware. You know, so nothing personal against any, any individual. But just like tonight, you know, I voted no again. If it occurs again next week, I'll still be a no vote, but that's where I stand until we get this resolved. Thank you. Councilmember Welsh, I see you're lighting.
Yeah, we had a discussion about Cal meetings, and I know that I brought up participating remotely at our next Cal meeting. So at this time, I'm going to let you know that I'm unable to attend that Cal meeting for the, for the sake of, of this conversation. I was going to try to participate remotely, but until we get this resolved, I'm going to have to miss that one meeting. Thank you.
Okay. All right. I don't see any other lights on, so we'll, let's move on to nine, D, I'm sorry, nine E is personnel actions. We don't have any listed. Nine F is petitions to counsel. We do not have any listed. Nine G is follow-up items for city management. We don't have any items listed. Item 10 is ordinances and resolution. 10A is public hearings, quasi-judicial hearings. First one on the list, Resolution 171-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution 171-23, a resolution providing for the vacation of Platt for a portion of the Eldorado Parkway West right-of-way and all underlying easements located adjacent to lots 48 through 51, block 190, Cape Coral Unit 3, providing for the vacation of Platt for platted easements lying in lots 49 through 50, block 190, Cape Coral Unit 3. Property located at 113 and 117 Eldorado Parkway West, providing an effective date.
This is a quasi-judicial hearing. Anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony must be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For the record, Patrick White, senior planner downstairs in DSD. I have a brief presentation for you tonight on this resolution, which is Resolution 171-23. The applicants are William and Margaret Cronin. The subject property is located at 113 and 117 Eldorado Parkway. The applicants are requesting to vacate 2,000 square feet of street right-of-way along with underlying easements and 354 feet of platted easements in lots 49 to 50, block 190. The aerial before you shows the properties in a red outline. We're in southeast Cape Coral. The future land use of the property is depicted on the left and the zoning map on the right. It is a single-family area. The notification of our, of our mailing is depicted in the red and white outline. A quick background, the vacation application was submitted by the Cronins. They own both the properties. The properties have a future land use of a single family, zone single family. The vacation will enlarge the area of the eastern lot. There is a number of exhibits in the resolution. Exhibit A is the right-of-way vacation. I've depicted it in blue. Exhibit B is the PUE vacation. I've depicted it in red. And Exhibit C is the PUE, which is retained to reestablish a six-foot perimeter PUE. The right-of-way is at the end of Eldorado, constitutes a dead-end street. The city has a stormwater inlet and a drainage pipe, which will be relocated. That is generally depicted in Exhibit D. The city will retain easements, maintaining a perimeter easement of six feet. The cul-de-sac will not be impacted, and all utility providers have provided letters of no objection. Staff recommends approval. The hearing examiner recommended approval on June 20th, and I will stand by for any questions.
Thank you. I now open up public hearing. Anyone who should speak on Resolution 171-23, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 171-23?
Motion to approve.
Have a second. Second. Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please read, I'm sorry, please call the roll.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosd. Cummings.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Six ayes, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to Resolution 194-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution 194-23, a resolution pursuant to the City of Cape Coral Land Development Code, Article III, Development Review, Chapter 1. Development Review Procedures, Section 3.1.11 Public Hearing Procedures, and Section 3.1.14 Review by Department Directors, Administrative Appeals and Appeals, and the City of Cape Coral Comprehensive Plan, Affirming or Reversing the Decision of the Hearing Examiner Rendered on April 26, 2023, in VAR Hex Order 1-2023, that denied a variance of 6.7 feet from the minimum front setback requirement of 25 feet to allow a single-family home to be constructed 18.3 feet from the front property line in a residential single-family zone on property described as lots 39 and 40, block 129, Cape Coral Unit 5. Property is located at 302 Southwest 29th Street, providing an effective date.
This is a quasi-judicial hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, provide testimony, must be sworn in.
Please, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Turn it over to staff first. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. For the record, Anthony Santora, Associate Planner for City Planning Division. So the case we bring for you today is Resolution 194-23, also known as Appeal 23-2. So this is brought by the appellant, Ms. Amy Thabo of Pavie's Law Firm, representing the property owner, Cape Coral Holding HD LLC, of the property address 302 Southwest 29th Street. This property is located at the southwest intersection of Southwest 29th Street and Southwest 3rd Avenue. We'll see it in a little bit. The property is approximately 12,300 square feet, or roughly 0.28 acres. So they are requesting an appeal of the hex order, VAR Hex Order 01-2023, which was rendered on 4/18/23, denying the front yard setback variance of 6.7 feet to a new house that was constructed on that property. So a little bit on the variance case. So the applicant was Pavie's Law Firm with the same property owner. The lot has a future land use classification of single family. It is zoned R1. The property owner, who is also the developer, constructed a house on the property legally through permit number B21-27441. Within that permit application, they illustrated a site plan that showed the property meeting all setbacks. The dwelling was constructed within the front yard setback due to surveyor error, as the surveyor has attested to through the various meetings, which we'll cover in a moment. And the case was heard before the hearing examiner three different times, and ultimately, the hearing examiner denied the request. So here we can see the property highlighted in red at the southwest corner of Southwest 29th and Southwest 3rd Avenue. And here we can just see the future, the future land use of the surrounding area. It sits within a single-family residential neighborhood. Again, everything around it is zoned the same as the property. So this is the revised survey that was submitted, the as-built survey that was submitted as part of the hearings. Here we can see in the front yard, if you follow the cursor, a 18.3-foot setback from the front property line to the face of the garage, and a 24.4 setback from the front property line to the face of this crop out, which is the bathroom, the shower location of the bathroom. So I want to just give a very brief overview of the timeline for the hearings. So this did go through three separate hearings. The first one was on 2/21/23, the second on 3/7/23, and then the final on 4/18/23. As stated, for the final, it was denied. The hearing examiner in her hex order stated that it failed to meet six of the seven criteria that are outlined in LDC Section 4.3.3B. And you can see the criteria failed to meet is criteria 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 7. 3.4.3.3B does state that the applicant must meet all criteria for the variance to be approved. So just a very brief summary of the 2/21 hearing. When the case was originally heard, the applicant did request for a continuance due to the property owner not being able to be present at the hearing due to a medical emergency. Staff had no objection, and the case pending, the ability for it to get noticed and the amount of time was continued to the 3/7 hearing. At the 3/7 hearing, testimony was provided. The applicant provided testimony. She also called on several witnesses, Ms. Judith McCarrier, who is the surveyor for the property, Joe Martins, who is the property owner and developer for that property, and Mr. Jason Heistec, who was a draftsman that worked on the drawing set for the property. Staff also provided testimony at that hearing and noted that, and staff's recommendation was denial, stating that the proposed variance failed to meet two of the seven necessary criteria for approval, specifically criteria 1 and criteria 4. The hearing examiner did continue that hearing to 4/18, so that the applicant could put together some cost estimates to potential solutions that were brought up at that hearing, specifically around garage renovations or the construction of a new garage to meet code without the necessary necessity of a variance, which we will cover a little bit later. So at the 4/18 hearing, the case was heard by the hearing examiner again. The applicant presented final testimony and materials. Staff presented final testimony and materials, again stating that their recommendation was denial, as it still did not meet two of the seven criteria. And then ultimately, the hearing examiner concluded that the application did not meet six of the seven criteria, and posted denial on 4/26. The order was delivered, the attested order on 5/4, and it was delivered to staff and the applicant. So a little bit on the appeal intent and timeline, as indicated in the LOI. The appellant, Amy Thabo Police Law Firm, submitted the appeal order on 5/30/23 through the city clerk's office. As stated in the intro, they are seeking a reversal of the hex order and granting that 6.7-foot front yard setback variance that was requested in VAR 35, uh, 23-35, sorry. The appeal was transmitted to staff on 5/31. Staff reviewed it, compiled the exhibit materials, and delivered their recommendation, including in the report. That report was transmitted to the appellant on 7/13, and the resolution was generated, and this meeting was scheduled for hearing. So the decision criteria is outlined in LDC Section 3.1.14C. Basically states that any aggrieved party by decision of the hearing examiner on a quasi-judicial matter file may file an appeal to the city council within 30 days by filing a written notice of appeal with the city clerk. All such appeals shall be based on the record. That was done, so the appeal was accepted and processed. As a note, on the record does mean all material and testimony in interview, meeting, or courtroom session, of which audio or video record is kept as permanent evidence. And no new material may be presented or considered, which was not part of the original proceedings. A list of exhibits was provided as part of the staff report for council consideration. Also, decisions made of city council can be made in relation to an appeal case, shall be made pursuant to LDC Section 3.1.12. A. Which basically specifies that decisions shall be made pursuant, excuse me, to specific criteria applicable in Chapter 2, and then if Chapter 2 does not specify any criteria, it shall be, the decision shall be based on whether the application complies with this article and any regulations authorized by this code, and will protect the public health, safety, and welfare. Chapter 2 of Article 3 does not include specific criteria for the decisions regarding variances. Therefore, it's the original criteria that were outlined in Article 3, Chapter 4, Subsection 4.3.3. B, which was the original criteria considered for the variance. Now, council may also consider other regulations that are contained in the Land Development Code, as well as whether the request protects the public health, safety, and welfare. So the criteria, as stated, are found in 3.4.3. B, and they are the seven criteria that are listed, which we will go through, so I will not specify them here. We're going to be going through them as briefly as possible. So the options that are available to the council are twofold. Where the council makes a determination based on the criteria, they have the option to deny the appeal, thus affirming the decision of the hearing examiner and denying the variance for the front yard setback. Or council can choose to approve the appeal, thus reversing the decision of the hearing examiner and granting the variance setback. Council may, may impose any number of conditions on approval, so long as they are in accordance with LDC Section 3.1.13. A and 3.1.13. B, specifically regarding protecting health, safety, and welfare, as well as some specific criteria. Here's a list of the exhibits that were submitted as part of the record of review. This was contained in the staff report. My apologies, there were three hearings. There was a lot of material, so the staff report was fairly long. So staff began with their recommendation by doing an analysis of the record. So we looked at Section 3.4.3. B1, which is the first criteria. That special conditions and circumstances exist which are peculiar to the land structure or building involved, and which are not applicable to other land structures or buildings in the same zoning district. So staff had found through their analysis originally of the variance case that this criterion was not met, and they provided testimony as to the existing condition of the lot pre-construction, as the house was not constructed at that time, and therefore did not necessitate a warrant, a variance, and that the construction of a property on there, which was out of line with the code, was not subject to a special provision of construction on the land. The applicant did not agree with this. They, they stated in their testimony that the construction of the property, as it is specifically constructed, does constitute a special circumstance as it is constructed on the property and therefore exists. Ultimately, the hearing examiner found that the criterion was not met, specifically stating that the owner contractor, the owner and contractor, who is one and the same, could not violate the Land Development Code and then claim the very act of violation is sufficient to create a special condition and circumstances peculiar to the land structure or building. Staff went on to further analyze the second criteria, which is that special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant. Staff found this criteria was met. Staff had noted in their testimony that while the surveyor was acting as an agent and representative of the owner, they were acting within their due diligence and pertinence of their speciality, which is their surveying profession, and that the applicant, or the property owner had no way of actually verifying, other than providing additional services and paying the extra cost to verify that the property was constructed in the right location. The applicant agreed with this criteria and felt that this was met, and the hearing examiner ultimately determined that this criteria was not met. She did not agree with staff's assumption, or assertion, excuse me, and ultimately found that through the surveyor's own testimony, she is an agent of the applicant and therefore falls under the, the results of the applicant or the property owner themselves. So this was a direct action that was caused by the property owner, since he did retain the services of the specialized agent who worked for him. We then analyzed the third criteria, which was that granting the variance requested will not confer on the applicant any special privilege that is denied by the regulations to other lands, buildings, and structures in the same zoning district. Staff felt that this criterion was met. There were no other special conditions that were being granted. They still had the use of their front yard, although it was smaller. They still had the use of their backyard, although it was larger, but the other properties within the same zoning district still had similar uses, which were acceptable and not a special privilege. The applicant agreed with staff's assertion and felt that this criterion was met. The hearing examiner, however, determined that staff's assertion was incorrect, and that the granting of the variance for relief from an issue created... that the granting of the variance for relief from an issue created by the owner and the contractor would result in a special privilege which was conveyed, which was not obtainable by others in the same zoning district, which constructed the buildings in accordance with the Land Development Code. Staff also analyzed criterion 4, that literal interpretation of the provisions of the regulations would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by the other properties in the same zoning district under the terms of these regulations and would cause or impart unnecessary and undue hardship on the applicant. Staff had found that there were possible alternatives to design that were able to be undertaken on this property without the need of a variance. They provided expert testimony to the hearing examiner along with analysis of the existing drawings submitted for permit and doing their due diligence for determining specific cost estimates for the amount that it would undertake in order to provide such rectifications without the need of a variance. The applicant did not agree with these. They posted their own specific numbers. However, the property owner who generated the numbers was not able to be present at the 4/18 meeting, even though it was specified at the 3/7 meeting that he would be present or some representative would be present to discuss the numbers. And ultimately, the hearing examiner determined that staff's presented expert and comprehensive testimony demonstrated possible design solutions of varying configurations and cost ranges do exist. She also found that the applicant provided no expert witnesses or testimonies that illustrated literal interpretation of the provisions of the Land Development Code would not work, cause, or impart unnecessary or undue hardship. I'm moving as quickly as possible. There's a lot to cover. So criterion 5, we're almost through it. That the variance granted is the minimum variance that will make possible the reasonable use of land building or structure. Staff found that this criterion was met in their initial report and noted that the requested variance, if seeking, was the minimum that was necessary in order to make use of the property and get the certificate of occupancy. The applicant agreed with this and felt that the criterion was met as well. The hearing examiner did not agree with this criteria and ultimately found that since there are, exist which solutions, there exist solutions which are possible without the use of the variance, therefore they have reasonable use of the land building and structure now so long as they rectify the error that was caused. We also examined criteria 6, that granting the variance will not change the use to one that is not permitted in the zoning district or different from other land in the same district. Staff found that this criteria was met. The property is Zoned R1, single-family residential. A single-family residential dwelling was constructed on the property, and that is the intended use of the property for a single-family dwelling. The applicant agreed with this criteria, with this assertion, felt that the criteria was met. The hearing examiner also determined that this criteria was met and that the single-family residential house would be the intended use, and therefore it would not change the use of the property to one that is not in line with the criterion. And finally, that granting the variance will be in harmony with the general intent and purpose of these regulations and that the variance will not be injurious to the area involved or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare. Staff felt that this criterion was met in their recommendation, specifically noting that the property as it is currently designed is pretty standard for typical construction within the Cape. The location of the property, while substantially within the front yard, did have some, did not pose a public health, safety risk. They still had use of the front yard without going into the swale or out into the street, and that the approval of it would be in harmony with the general purpose of the regulations that are stated, which are to protect the health, safety, and welfare. The applicant agreed with this and felt the criterion was met. The hearing examiner ultimately determined that the criterion was not met, that the definition of variance in the LDC specifically requires that the applicant has done nothing to create the problem for which it now seeks relief, and that the request is not in harmony with the general intent and purpose of the variance as the alternate site plan is viable and without needing a variance. She also noted that within the testimony provided by the appellant, who is the applicant in the variance case, that the legal precedent brought forth by the applicant was contradictory to the assertion of the undue hardship burden and actually supported the ability for alternate site plans and therefore did not meet the requirements of this criterion. So with that, just a brief summary of the analysis that was conducted in regards to this. Staff had determined that the request did not meet for the original variance two of the seven criteria necessary for approval. It is specific to note that staff's determination is recommendation and accessory and also non-determinant. We do not make the determination for approvals on that. That is within the hearing examiner's jurisdiction. The hearing examiner did find that the request did not meet six of the seven criteria for approval. In analysis of all the materials, we found that the hearing examiner had exercised her authority according to the Land Development Code, specifically with her authority to approve or deny through LDC Section 3.1.2. B. 2., through the rules of evidence listed in Section 3.1.11. F., and the decision-making authority in 3.1.11. E. There is no material that is contained within the record that disputes this authority and that the decision was based on logical conclusions and factual findings within her scope of duties and was of sound determination and not of an arbitrary or capricious manner. So given that, the conclusions and findings of the hearing examiner in relation to the specific criteria of LDC Section 3.4.3. B. are fairly comprehensive with the hex order that is fairly lengthy and very robust and competently sufficient in providing conclusive evidence to the application of the criteria for consideration of this variance case and for the appeal case. Ultimately, the variance case through the hearing examiner's findings failed to meet seven of the required criteria, and therefore the appeal itself also does not meet seven, six of the seven necessary criteria for approval. The application must meet all seven criteria for it to be approved. So it is staff's recommendation that since not all seven criteria are met, the application for a variance should be denied and thereby the appeal denied, and that the council affirm the hearing examiner's decision ordered through hex order VAR, hex order 01-2003. Staff has not received any public correspondence in relation to the appeals case. We did receive three phone calls. They were informational only from surrounding property owners. Neither property owners wish to provide any support or opposition to the case. They just wanted to know why they received a letter. So with that lengthy summary, I will stand by for any questions if you have it.
Okay, thank you. I'll now open up the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on Resolution 194-23? Please come forward.
There.
Am I on the wrong one?
Yes, I believe that now we're going to hear from the individual seeing the appeal.
Correct. I was turning my pages. Which one are we on?
We are on the second.
What's the, give me the resolution number again. It's number two?
Yes.
194.
194-23. No, okay. So I'll now open up the public hearing. We'll hear from the...
Well, we're actually going to hear from the people seeing the appeal.
And then we'll do the public hearing after that.
Okay. Well, I'm going to actually get out of this quickly.
I'm sorry.
No, you're good. All right, well, I'm sorry. Can you show me how you did that again? My apologies.
That's okay.
New software.
Oh, thank you. Hi. Good afternoon, council members. For the record, Amy Theresen Thibault with Pavey's Law Firm. I would first and foremost like to thank staff for their very comprehensive review of the history of this case, the procedural requirements, and a general overview of, you know, what happened from the time this came across my desk in October up to today. I'd really like to emphasize, you know, this request is a simple one. We are seeking approval of a variance from a 25-foot front setback to 18.3 feet to legitimize a finished home that was completed 12 months ago. You know, this encroachment was unintentional, and it was not discovered until the final survey was sought, that final survey inspection that's required to obtain a CO. I believe the date of that was September 7th of last year. So at that time, this encroachment was discovered. At that point, the property owner corresponded with city staff, trying to figure out what to do, and of course, all arrows pointed back to the variance process. So it's important to note that this encroachment does not result in any deleterious effect on the city, on the public. There is no issue, you know, that would be detrimental to the public health, safety, welfare, not threatened, not actual, no harm. Conversely, this property owner is suffering a tremendous amount of hardship as a result of this particular issue. This house has not had a CO. It's been completed for 12 months. So, you know, on its face, that might not sound like a huge deal, but it has had a snowball effect. First and foremost, there is a construction loan essentially on the property. So the property owner is now in default on that loan and is facing imminent foreclosure proceedings, and that is because the house is completed, but there is no CO. So that is in default of construction loans generally. Most construction loans have certain terms. You have to hit certain thresholds at certain times. He is unable to do that at the moment. Because of that, he also has an open NOC. He does not have the CO, so he can't get refinancing. Lenders will not secure a loan against this property without the CO. In the same vein, he is unable to get property insurance on this particular property because, again, homeowners insurance companies will not issue policies for properties that don't have COs. So we have an incomplete structure that is completely unoccupied, that's not on the tax roll, that is uninsured, and we are facing imminent foreclosure. The approval of the variance tonight would allow the property owner to obtain the CO in the coming days or weeks, and then subsequently obtain refinancing, get his insurance policy, and carry on. In addition to the issues I've already discussed, there's some other hardship that's involved here. First of all, tearing down the front 6.7 feet of a structure is expensive. It's time-consuming. It requires a tremendous amount of work beyond just knocking a wall down and moving it back seven feet. Electrical feed to the house will have to be relocated. Other utility lines will have to be relocated. The driveway would have to be completely reconfigured. The roof line would have to be reconfigured. The roof line would result in something that's disjointed. It would not be cohesive with what is, you know, present on the rest of the house, so you'd have an unattractive roof line. And then you would end up with the codified minimum garage, which is 14 feet wide by 20 feet deep. And for context, most standard-size SUVs, you might be able to pull them in and fit them, but you would not be able to open the doors on both sides. A lot of SUVs are around 10 feet wide. The doors are, you know, three feet wide on each side, so you'd be pulling in on one side. You could only have people sitting on the driver's side, basically. It's just, there's a variety of hardship. So we are simply, we are simply seeking a variance. Now, variances, to kind of pull this back, zoning is a part of your police power. So you can adopt zoning to protect the public health, safety, welfare, and you do. Front setbacks, street setbacks are a really good example of that. They exist to protect something, and specifically visibility. It's, you know, protecting visibility for people passing by on the adjacent right-of-way, for people walking on the sidewalks, people bicycling by. But it's also for people entering and exiting this particular property. So here, even with the encroachment, we don't actually impede the visibility triangle. There is no deleterious effect on visibility. The purpose of the setback is still accomplished. Further, this is a corner lot, and I'll go to it in a moment, but the front of the house faces north. The secondary roadway is on the east side. We have 27.6 feet on the east side. So really, I mean, the building envelope, if the front door was on the east side of the property, we would exceed the 25-foot setback, and that would mean that the side is facing north, and we would exceed the 10-foot setback required on the secondary road because we would have 18.3 feet. So the building envelope itself doesn't create some sort of like hazard to public health, safety, and welfare. But here, the law does also recognize that in situations like this, where there is no harm that's being presented, but where literal compliance with what is codified in the zoning code creates an unnecessary hardship on the property owner, variances can be granted. And there's a variety of criteria that is discussed in Florida and federal common law, and that's really what has been codified in your code. As staff mentioned, we look to seven different criteria. And going into the hearings in front of the hearing examiner, we really disagreed on two points, the first and the fourth criteria. First and foremost, I'm just going to point to, you know, what we disputed to cover that, but the special conditions and circumstances that exist are peculiar to the land, building, or structure involved, and they can't be applicable to any other lands, structures in R1 zoning. So in this sense, we are looking at the conditions and the circumstances of this property. It was erroneously constructed into the setback. It was a survey error. As far as I know, based on my conversations with city staff, my personal research, I do not know of a similar fact pattern that has been presented to the city where there has been this type of encroachment and where a variance has been requested. That in and of itself demonstrates that this is unique, it's peculiar. The fourth criterion deals with hardship. Again, we've covered what denial of the variance would mean for this property owner, and we've covered what little difference, if any, approval or denial of the variance would have on the public health, safety, welfare. Again, this is exactly what a hardship, this is exactly a hardship as it was intended to be under the variance criteria. Just to quickly cover the hearing examiner's order, I will gently just assert that I disagree with her analysis of this particular issue. If you have any specific questions for me, I'm open to answering those. But at this time, I will conclude my presentation, and I'll leave it to you guys to ask any specific questions that you have for me.
Mr. City Attorney.
I don't know if I can finish this point in time, but just to make sure that you understand. This is only on the record of the present hearing examiner, which will hopefully put out a full view analysis, so it goes very, very clear on that. It's really well-known, and that's only on the record certified and confirmed.
So my question is, I saw two or three other people stand up and was sworn in.
They were sworn in. I don't know who they are, but what you're really only making the city not as well for is presenting the hearing examiner. You shouldn't be hearing any of them.
Okay, so just the two, the applicant and the attorney who represents?
Correct. And our...
It's the property owner and the surveyor.
It doesn't say that here, but I understand what you're saying.
Only because it is a review of the record, right? And that was, you're not hearing additional information, you're not hearing additional testimony, it is just the record.
Okay.
Because that is the scope of the appeal.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
So with that being said, I will open up any, for any questions from their attorney first, and then if we have any questions for our staff, then we can address that at that time. Councilmember Cummings.
If you would start with their attorney first.
Any questions that you may have with her.
Amy, right?
Hi, yes.
Okay, so let's go over this one more time real quick. So the completion was done last year, September, correct? And the gentleman's name, the owner, he, did he build this himself with his company or did he hire this out?
He built it with his company.
Okay, with his company. Who was his surveyor who approved the foundation before the build-out?
So that's a good point, and I'm going to give you probably a longer-winded answer than what you were looking for. The foundation was staked by a local surveying company that is owned and operated by Judy McCarrier. Judy did not physically stake the property, but another licensed broker...
Who staked the property?
I do not know the name of that.
I do not know the name of that individual, but-
It was somebody working for Judy.
Okay.
And in the process of staking the foundation, there was an error. The foundation was poured, and a foundation inspection is required by law. Now, it's my understanding that there's an unusual loophole where we have city inspectors that come out to perform the inspections under building permits, and we have private providers that do the same thing. But it is my understanding that a foundation survey is only required when using a city inspector. In this instance, a private provider was used, so the foundation was staked, but there was never a foundation survey required to confirm that the foundation, as it was poured, was built within the setbacks, and that it otherwise adhered to, you know, the footprint that would be allowed by the LDC. And because of that, this encroachment was not discovered at that time. And it wasn't, in fact, discovered until the final survey that was required at the end, when the entire structure had been completed. So the foundation was poured. It was staked improperly by the surveyor. It was poured. It was built on. Nobody caught it, not the inspectors, nothing until it came time for the private inspection, or the final survey inspection.
So when you say not the inspectors, are you meaning his inspectors or the city inspectors?
A private inspector that was hired by the contractor. It's customary for home builders to use private and city inspectors, just sort of depending on the context of the case. A lot of times, things get really busy. If you have a lot of people pulling permits and building, you may not have the manpower at the city to get inspectors out as quickly as you would like to. So the law does allow for private providers to come out and perform those services. And that was permitted here. That was sought here. And as a result, the foundation survey wasn't required.
Okay, so you're saying that his, I just want to make sure I'm covering all my bases, okay? Because the situation is very odd. Because I'm trying to look at it, if I own property and I go to build me a house, and I decide to take my LLC company, and I stake it out, do my foundations, and I ignore the city, and I build, and then I complete it, and I don't have the city approving anything, and then I say, voila, here I go. I got like my tiki head. I got this and that. That's what I'm trying to figure out. Where, the city had to be involved somehow, some way, because I can't just see the city just ignoring a build-out taking place. This is where I'm a little lost. So with this build-out being done, did they ever go to the city to say, hey, take a look at where we're at now, so we can get the approval to where we can move forward for the next build-out? That's where I'm confused.
No, because, so that type of inspection ideally would be done by city inspectors. It's cheaper. It, you know, can alleviate issues such as this. But the idea is that private providers are supposed to provide the exact same services essentially as city inspectors. They're stepping into their shoes. So it doesn't necessarily, the only distinction between using the private provider and not using a city inspector in this particular case really comes down to the foundation survey requirement. It doesn't necessarily mean that the private provider is any better or worse than a city inspector. And, you know, again, they're supposed to be doing the same thing, identifying the same issues. But I'll also submit that, you know, inspectors generally are not Florida licensed surveyors. And really only a Florida licensed surveyor is technically, you know, has the authority, the expertise to identify specific measurements from property lines and things like that. So if we'd had a foundation survey, if that had been required, if we had had it, we would have discovered this issue. It wouldn't have arisen to the level of becoming a hardship. It wasn't required. We didn't have it. I don't, I hesitate to try to impose any responsibility on the private provider. But the fact is that they just didn't catch it, and nobody did.
The next question I have is very important. How many other homes has he built?
That's a 20 or 30 homes.
20 or 30? How many other homes that you built did this happen to? None. Were there any other homes that were built here in Cape Coral? Were all the homes built in Cape Coral? And this is the only one this has happened to? Have you used the surveyor before with your prior homes? Same survey? And this one survey out of 20, 30 homes slipped?
Yes.
So now we have a house that's been built for a year that's not insured, that could be going in foreclosure, because he has to pay on it, for 6.7 foot, correct? Now, I did drive by that house yesterday, and I did take pictures. And it wasn't that far off that I looked at for the house next door. It is on a corner lot, and I did see all that extra space that you had on the side. So I'm just trying to figure out how the foundation, we go from foundation to building without the inspection. That's where I'm just a little confused. On all the prior homes, did the city inspect all the other houses? No. And they met qualifications? That's all I have for right now. Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney?
Just a point of clarification in regards to the because this is a review of the record. Just to provide that clarity, the hearing examiner specifically delineated on page, it was page six of 16, the role of the surveyor regarding the staking. So I could read from it, or you could refer to it, but it does specifically delineate what the role of the surveyor and what they did. So I just want to make sure that we understand that this is what we're going on. I realize counsel is making an argument, but counsel is ultimately making an argument that may or may not be what was in the record. So I just want to be clear on that. This is a document that you're going under in conjunction with all the other documents that have been presented. And like I said, I could read it if you want. And when I just read it?
Yeah, would you please?
It says Judith Judy McCarrier, surveyor, testified that she was hired to stake out the property pursuant to an original site plan. The site plan showed that the house was facing the corner. Three days later, she was advised that she had received the wrong site plan, and that was not where the house was supposed to be located. She received a new site plan and restaked the property. She testified that there was a lot going on at that time with the construction. She further testified that she had made an error. So I want to make sure that we, that is the record as was presented before the hearing examiner.
So the surveyor is now claiming she made the error on it? Did I hear that right? Okay. And this is not, from what I saw, and I just want to, if you don't mind, it's not hazardous. I mean, it's not dangerous. I didn't see where, you know, cars can get hit. So I see a major oops, and how I'm looking at this, if he's built 20 or 30 homes, and they've all passed inspection, and here we are in hurricane season. He's had no insurance for a year. And even if he gets insurance now, it's not even going to be covered, because the way everything is going right now for like three or six months, or whatever the new laws are with these insurance companies in the state of Florida, that he's really in a pickle barrel. I mean, that's how I'm looking at it. Now, if he's had five other homes, has kind of had the same situation out of 20 or 30 that he built, then I could be like, but I'm just, I'm trying to just grasp a little bit of the situation he's in. And 20 or 30 houses were all built here in Cape Coral, you're saying? So, I mean, I have more questions, but I'm good for now. I'll let other people speak, if that's okay.
Mr. City Attorney?
Just a further clarification, and again, I'm going from the underlying record. The testimony from the owner was that he's been building houses in Cape Coral for over 20 years, and has been involved in the construction of over 100 homes in Cape Coral during that time. And the only reason why I'm bringing this up is, I just want to make sure that we don't we don't go down a path that is not consistent with the code, which talks about the record. That is all. And then another aspect I want to just, and I'm reading from the record that where the hearing examiner heard testimony that the surveyor testified that she considered herself as a representative of the property owner for purposes of performing the survey work. Accordingly, the hearing examiner finds that the actions of the surveyor as the owner's agent are directly attributable to the applicant. And I'm reading straight from the order. I'm just trying to make sure that we stay consistent legally with what is required. That's all.
The question I have, 20 or 30 homes or 100 homes? How many homes did he build? That's a huge difference.
It says 100 homes in the 20 years.
Okay, in 20 years, 100 homes.
And I'll note just a quick, quick clarification here. The hearing examiner's order references that he has been involved with the construction of 100 homes. Whether or not he was the general contractor or the owner of the company that was charged with building the homes is, to me, a distinct issue. But the ultimate takeaway here is that he has constructed a lot of homes, and he's been involved in the construction of a lot of homes. And I would hesitate to try to get down into the nitty-gritty of, was, you know, 30 homes or 100 homes? So, you know, it's a discrepancy.
This isn't, this isn't an open dialogue.
Right.
We have a process here to follow. We got to make sure we follow it.
So, you know, I don't think the discrepancy in the numbers between the record and now is really material.
Yep. And I think it's important to mention, I think, what the city attorney is trying to get across to us, that the information that we have to go off of is what all the factual information that was put together in our backup material, the hearing examiner, all the hearings, that's what we have to go off of. Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct, consistent with what your code requires for this type of appeal.
Right. We're not allowed to ask additional questions. We're not allowed to ask for additional information. We can only look at the information that we have that's presented to us to make our determination. With that, I don't have any questions. I don't have any, see any more light showing. But I do have a few comments, only because, you know, this is what I've been doing for the last 36 years. So I got a little bit of knowledge. So I just wanted to make sure, especially, it sounds like Counselmember Cummings may help you a little bit. You know, here in Cape Coral, or actually anywhere in the state, you know, you have an opportunity to either utilize city inspectors or private providers. And you have to make that known during the application of the permit. So you can't mix the two. You can't get half of them with the city and half of them with a private provider. Now, there are some zoning requirements, if you go through inspections, that take place at the end of construction, that they come out and look at. At the end of construction with a private provider, you have to submit a flood elevation certificate and survey. Apparently, that's when this was determined, that, you know, the stakeout was improper, and the structure was built past the setback requirements. Now, I will tell you, city inspections, it's a little different. At the time of tie beam, you have to submit a flood elevation certificate and a under-construction survey before I can call in a tie beam inspection. And the reason being is so they can make sure everything is where it needs to be, and you meet your setback requirements. Private providers, you don't have to provide that. Everything goes to the end. Private providers, they are, inspectors are there to make sure that the Florida Building Code has been applied during the construction, and it passes and meets the Florida Building Code. So it doesn't matter if it's a private provider inspector or a city inspector. They're both looking at the same thing. With all that being said, you know, with a stakeout, I personally believe, I know that when you get a stakeout of a piece of property, for the most part, you're about 45 feet from the street to the front of the in a time you have your 20-foot setback, or your 25-foot setback, and then your 20-foot right-of-way. Looks like the right-of-way here. It's probably close to that.
It's 25.
But, you know, so for me personally, I would think that would be pretty easily to see. I mean, you know, if it seems it's closer. You know, I did pull up Google Earth. I did not go by the house, but I did pull up Google Earth, which recently has been updated, and this house is in there, and you can see it steps much further forward. The other thing I noticed in this, if you look on the drawings before you hear, it is a corner lot. There could be an opportunity for side access for the garage off of Southwest Third Avenue. You got 35.2 feet there. The setback over there, seven and a half feet. You got 27.6, so you got about 20 feet or so, a little over 20 feet on that side that you could do a, in addition to that garage, and have the garage coming off of that side. There are possibilities, you know, with what you see in the survey here. So I think, you know, we'll have to look at the, look at the information that was presented to us, and the information that was presented in the HEC's hearing. I kind of agree with staff that the hardship, you know, the hardship was because someone made a mistake, and the structure was built. So then you have to determine, does that rise to the threshold of a hardship because of improper construction? That's a question we'll have to ask ourselves. You know, so that's where I'm at. You know, there's some other opportunities. Would they be more costly than granting the variance? Sure, that's why they're here. It would be much easier to grant the variance. I will say that I pulled up and asked staff for some data on variances that have been applied for the last three years, I believe, was what my request was. And I think I received five. All of those variances that were applied for, only one was granted out of the five. And they all had to do with side or rear setbacks. None to the front. So I'll let staff, if they can, you know, let us know if there's ever been a front setback variance that's been issued. But I can say the last three years, because of the information I requested, it was either three or five years there wasn't any. Counselmember Shepard?
Yeah, this is a tough one. I had the same thoughts that we can maneuver the garage to be a side load. I thought that would be an answer. But at the same time, what's bothering me is there was no intent of malice. People hired professionals to guide them on this project, and it wasn't them that made the error. It was the company that they hired to do the stakeout. So, you know, I'm for sticking to the rules, but I don't think there was an intent. Like I said, I think that, you know, they followed the right procedure. They did everything the way they were told to do, and the problem was caused by the organization that did the stakeout. So I have, this is a tough one. You know, I'm not in this position to cause hardships for citizens in Cape Coral. My job is to protect and serve the citizens of Cape Coral, and to make sure that they have the proper services. And, you know, I'm really undecided right now if I want to give a hardship to this family for something that wasn't really anything that they did on their own. So, I'd like to hear some more thoughts on this. I'm not really ready for a decision on this one. This is tough, like I said. I'm not a builder. I don't know how much trouble it would be to do the side load, if that's the answer, that you're not doing major demolition of a building other than adding to the side, moving the garage door, cutting off the footage. But, yes, it's a fact that there haven't been zoning- But, yes, it's a fact that there haven't been zoning issues, but, or measurement issues that we allowed, but I've seen different things be built in the city that slipped through the cracks that maybe weren't an accident. So, this is tough. Like I said, I don't want to cause a hardship. I don't see an intent of malice. I think this is just one of them freak mistakes and that's where I stand. Thank you.
Councilmember Cummings.
So, Mayor, I had some concerns yesterday and I was talking with our city manager, Mike, and he brought in a lot of the department leaders because of this being a great concern and being a unique situation and, you know, understanding that how everything costs and it's just sitting there. So, I asked some questions about when we stake out a foundation with surveyors, what can we do for the city to come in and to check it off so we don't have these problems in the future as our city grows? And kind of at our, at our roundtable, we had talked, and Mike, would you mind explaining a little bit of what we have shared? Is this the time to do it or no? No, this is not the time. Okay, so, I guess where I'm coming from is kind of what Councilman Shepherd was stating. This is a big oops, and I don't think he intently did this. You're looking at the other houses he built, 20, 30 of them in Cape Coral, it didn't happen. And I understand the last four years, there were five other ones, four of them was declined and the other one was approved, I think, because it was like seven or eight inches. It was something very minute. And I went to the house for a reason yesterday. I wanted to see it with my own eyes. I did take pictures. I believe you have a very large van sitting in the driveway and I saw that he had some extra space with that very large van, being on the corner lot. I did see the side of what you're talking about, maybe you changed the garage door on the other side so you would have more room, you could have the frontal area. I guess what I'm saying is, this has been a year, sitting a year, and I understand they've been in and out of court, but with this being with someone else that he had hired out for staking out the foundation and then building it out, I guess what I'm saying is, well, I guess before I say other things, when our attorney comes up, I would like to ask him a couple of questions because there was a, I had a question on, where's that? The six out of seven that didn't make it, that failed, I wanted him to explain what the sections meant, because we just had the numbers, so it wasn't explained.
Are you asking, there were seven criteria, as I understand it, of the seven criteria, six of them were not satisfied, only one was satisfied. For every variance request, there's delineated certain criteria, and it seems that of that, all but one was not satisfied as a result of what was presented to the hearing examiner, if that's the question that you're asking.
Okay, so, it was just the one? I thought there were six out of seven that was declined.
Well, staff only just revealed two. Right, but to be clear, even though staff may have disagreed, the hearing examiner made a determination that it was six criteria were not met, even though staff may have said only two. So, I want to be abundantly clear that this is a, an appeal from a hearing examiner that identified that there was a failure of this applicant to meet not one, not two, but six of the seven. So, and again, you know, what can, and I'm, the council can approve it, the council can disapprove it, and if they approve it, it's just with conditions. You certainly have that within your authority.
And may I interject quickly? In the interest of time, I didn't want to delve into why I specifically disagree with the hearing examiner's order. I'm happy to do that now and explain what each criteria means and why, and where that kind of comes from in the case law, if that's helpful. But if it's not helpful to you guys, I will refrain. So, the first criteria, special conditions and circumstances exist which are peculiar to the land structure or building involved, not applicable to other lands in the same zoning district. That talks about the uniqueness and the peculiarity of the, like, the specific set of facts to this case. And the legal analysis behind that is based on the fact that if you have people regularly having the same issues, the same hardship, it speaks to the fact that maybe the ordinance needs to be amended. So, here, the purpose of a variance is that it's such an unusual situation that it really justifies a one-off approval. The second criteria, the special conditions and circumstances, do not result from actions of the applicant. That's basically a clean hands argument. You can't come in and do what you said. Well, I would prefer to have my house be a little bit larger, I'd prefer to have a larger footprint, and therefore, I'm going to intentionally build outside of the footprint. Or, a lot of what we see in the case law is people buying property and trying to establish a use that's not permitted in the zoning district. You can't just do that. Here, the applicant, the property owner, did not create this. He doesn't have unclean hands. The third criteria talks about special privileges. So, what special privileges would the applicant be getting? You know, if we're talking about putting up a commercial business in the middle of single-family zoning, certainly that would be a special privilege. But here, I mean, he's not establishing a use that's not otherwise permitted, that speaks to the sixth criterion. He's not getting a larger house. This is an 1,800-square-foot house. He has, you know, an excess of 10 feet on the east side of his property. If he'd wanted to build a bigger property, he certainly could have done that within the, you know, parameters of what is permitted in the land development code. He wasn't seeking to build something bigger or different than what is otherwise allowed. The fourth criterion relates to hardship, you know, we've talked about that a lot. But that really comes down to where do private property rights yield to the public interest and vice versa. The fifth criterion talks about reasonable use of the land. It's pretty straightforward. Again, the sixth criterion is basically you can't have a use variance. You can't come in and establish a use that's not permitted by right or permissible by special exception in that zoning district. And the seventh criterion deals with, is there a detriment to the public health, safety, and welfare? Because if there is, that kind of factors back into, hey, maybe property, private property rights don't yield to the public interest, or they do yield to the public interest if there is a situation that would be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. Here, there's no impact on the public health, safety, and welfare, so do the private property rights really need to yield to, you know, the public interest, to do the, you know, to literally comply with the setback? And I think common sense tells us that it does not. Now, going through, I'll note that the hearing examiner, in her wove, her analysis of different criteria, I would argue it was improper. It's what we would argue is an essential, or departure from the essential requirements of the law, which is grounds for appeal in circuit court. That's not what we're doing here. That's not what I'm trying to allege. But I do think, you know, as far as criteria one, she used an analysis that concluded that, hey, this was a self-created hardship, well, and therefore, there aren't special conditions and circumstances. Self-created hardship or self-created conditions, that analysis really should be limited to criteria two. When we're looking at criteria one, we really need to look to, are there conditions and circumstances that are peculiar to the land structure or building? She went into the self-created conditions analysis prematurely. With criteria three, again, she used the self-creation argument. It's not what she was being asked. Criteria four, she essentially disagreed with the hardship analysis. With five, she went back to the fact that there's no hardship. So, she kind of bounced all over the place in her legal analysis here. And I only say that because we're talking about the fact that she did find that we didn't meet six of the seven criteria. I personally believe that that is erroneous based on Florida law, as applied to the facts here and Cape Coral's land development code. I will also note, for what it is worth, since we've talked about other variances, Florida law is really clear. Approval of a variance does not create precedent. It does not. If you approve this variance today, that doesn't mean that you would be required or that the hearing examiner would be required to approve other variances, even under a similar fact pattern.
Okay, Councilmember Hayden.
So, are you saying that your client met all seven criteria?
I am. And...
Even though staff also said that you didn't meet seven criteria?
So, staff found that we met five of the seven. We disagreed with staff's analysis to the first criterion. Staff looked at the plotted dimensions of the lot and the pre-construction grade.
Okay, but do you believe staff made a case that you could support that you didn't meet one of the criteria?
I do not believe that staff made a case that we didn't support any of the criteria.
No one did, but you did. Here's what I can get past. I know there's hardship there. I know you haven't been able to get in your home for a year. I'm sure it's a beautiful home. But I don't really see that you've met all seven of the criteria which is required by 3.4.3B. So, with that, I'm going to make a motion to deny.
I'll second. Councilmember Long.
Thank you, Mayor. So, really, talking about the criterion, your burden is that you have to meet all seven, right? And so, let's just say that there's merit in the argument that the hearing examiner might have used improperly one of the criteria as far as her analysis is one of the other. So, let's assume for the sake of argument that we'll concede those, the other ones to you. That still leaves, one, if it is to be interpreted literally, that her argument is undoubtedly applicable in that particular criterion when it comes to self-inflicted actions of the applicant. So, then, again, sticking to the record, which is our obligation here, she goes on to state in her decision that there's, there's really two possible scenarios, by her words. And the one at first is that the owner failed to ever, exit, and I'm reading from the record, to ever visit the construction site at any point to view the progression of the work. The hearing examiner finds this would lack credibility, especially as the owner contractor testified this was to be his personal residence. And the second scenario is that the owner contractor visited the site and never noticed the setback violation. The hearing examiner finds this scenario to also lack credibility. It's not believable that a contractor with Mr. Martin Self described below the experience would fail to notice at various stages of construction that the residence was substantially encroaching on the required setback. Were the contractor less experienced, or if the owner were not also the contractor, the hearing examiner might be more likely to accept this testimony, but that is not the case here. So, again, keeping it to the record, saving me from having to dig through this, what would have been your testimony to counteract those two particular points if you did in your original?
Right. So, this is in relation to criterion two, I believe. Is that correct?
That's correct. Actions of the applicant.
She thinks it is self-created. So, the reality here is that we have evidence on the record. We have testimony under oath from the property owner, who is also the contractor, where he has stated that he was not aware of the encroachment until the final survey inspection came around. That alone, I think, is really important evidence that cannot be ignored. I don't, self-creation in terms of variance law is not apples-to-apples with agency law, meaning, there's a whole legal, there's a whole legal school of thought where the principal is responsible for the agent in many settings, but not in X, Y, and Z. That particular law is not really applicable here, and we did discuss that in depth in the hearings. The surveyor was not acting as an agent or an employee of the contractor either. She was acting as a surveyor. She came out, she was doing her job. It was a mistake. She wasn't directed to do anything. She, you know, it wasn't like the property owner wanted her to stake this incorrectly. So, I think that the agency analysis here is misplaced, and I also am disheartened that the testimony from the property owner, who does have boots on the ground, who does have an interest in getting this CO as soon as possible, was completely discredited and disregarded.
Mr. City Attorney?
Just a bit of clarification regarding the motion in the second. It was to deny, but it really is an affirmation of the decision of the hearing examiner. I believe that is, that is, because we're, just to be clear, we're either affirming it or we are not affirming it. And it sounded like the deny was to affirm the lower decision of the hearing examiner. As I understand, I would just want to be clear on that.
We were given two options, deny the appeal or approve the appeal.
Deny or, affirm or reverse? Because you are affirming the decision of the...
It's said on what was presented, deny the appeal or approve the appeal. So, are we changing how we're approaching this?
No, and just to, just to be clear, because there was a memorandum that was issued, and it's really affirming the decision of the, essentially, the lower tribunal, which is the hearing examiner. And that decision is to deny the variance, but you are, you're acting as, essentially, a appellate court reviewing it. So, you would be either affirming the decision or you would be reversing the decision. If you are affirming the decision, then that is a denial of their appeal.
So, do I need to restate the motion that we are affirming the decision?
The way I would make the motion is that you would be affirming the decision of the hearing examiner in denying their variance request.
Okay, I'm making the motion to affirm the decision of the hearing examiner to deny the motion for the, to deny the variance.
Second agrees. I don't see any other lights on. Is there any other discussion? If not, I'll have a, a city clerk call the roll.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
No.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
No.
Cummings?
No.
Gunter?
Aye.
Four eyes, three days, motion carried.
Okay. We'll move on to item 10B, which is public hearings, legislative hearings, ordinance 51-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 51-23, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral comprehensive plan by amending the future land use map from mixed use to multifamily residential land use for property described as a tract or parcel of land situated in the state of Florida, County of Lee, City of Cape Coral, lying in the northeast quarter of Section 21, Township 43 South, Range 24 East, as more particularly described herein. Property located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Del Prado Boulevard and De Navara Parkway, providing severability and an effective date.
Good evening, Chad.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. For the record, Chad Boyko, Principal Planner with the City's Plan Division. As, and as the applicant indicated previously for this, they are going to be asking for additional time for their presentation. I believe they may be asking for upwards of 20 minutes. As this is a new, this is sort of a new policy, if I could have some additional time as well, I can also stick to the five minutes. It's completely up to council's discretion. So, I'm here for any sort of feedback in regards to that.
Yeah, I know we've set the criterias, and I know it's a new policy, but I'll open it up for council to consider any additional time. I know they are asking for 20 minutes. We can either keep with the time period that we have, where we can increase it to any amount of minutes that we wish. With that, I'll, I'll open it up for a discussion. Councilmember Hayden.
I'm not for increasing the times.
Okay. I'm okay with the five minutes.
Anyone else have a good fact?
Yep. Okay. All right, so we'll stick to the, to our policy.
All right. So, this is ordinance 51-23. This is a privately initiated lay-in juice case. The applicant is Acorn and... The applicant is Acorn Entrada LLC. This is located in one of the more northeastern portions of the city. It's located at the intersection of Del Prado Boulevard and De Navarra Parkway. The size is 25 acres. It does have utilities that are available to it either through the city or through, I believe, there is some other extragovernmental utilities that can provide service to this. And then the applicant's request is they are looking to amend 25 acres out of a 50-acre tract from the mixed-use featured land designation to the multifamily residential feature land use designation. This is about a square mile. It's in the northeast part of Cape Coral. The entirety of that square mile has the mixed-use designation, as you can see the outline, property outlined in blue, and they're looking to take the, sort of the interior portion of a 50-acre tract and take 25 acres of that and turn it into multifamily residential land use classification. We meant the entire property is undeveloped. It's at the intersection of a principal arterial, which is the highest-class roadway within the city of Cape Coral, which means that it sees the most amount of trips that you can see for any road classification, and also De Navarra Parkway, which is a collector road. It was previously part of the PDP entitled the Commercial Center of Entrada. That approved about a quarter million square feet of commercial and then eight multifamily units on that PDP. It was later amended to remove those eight multifamily units, and the entire, and the entirety of the site was rezoned to commercial zoning. The amendment would remove commercial entitlements for approximately 50% of the site. We have a little breakdown of what the effect of the future land use map amendment would entail. We have a 50-acre parcel. The Fluma site is 25 acres. There is a 10 and 1/2 acre conservation easement that is in the northwestern portion of the site that is unbuildable. So out of this 50 acres, you already have 10 acres that is not buildable for anything. There's also an LCEC easement on the eastern portion of the side that is about, about an acre in size. The remaining commercial, if this amendment was approved, would be about 13 acres split between four out parcels that have frontage on Del Prado Boulevard. We analyzed this per the land development code and then also the future land, the comprehensive plan. I'm going to skip straight to the comprehensive plan section. We have eight commercial siting guidelines that sort of determine whether or not we think a property is suitable for the, for the, for a commercial designation. Staff finds that the site is consistent with seven of those commercial siting guidelines. The only one that the designation is not consistent with is access, which is ironic considering this has frontage on a principal arterial, but that access guideline relates to whether or not a site is located near a city parking lot or has an access management plan, or that has a roadway that has an access management plan. It's also compatible with three out of the four multifamily criteria. The only one that is not compatible with, with the multifamily criteria, I'm sorry, it's compatible with two guidelines. It's not compatible with two, which are transition from non-residential uses and assemblage opportunities. This is already an assembled site. That's why it does not meet the assemblage opportunity criteria. This is at, this is located at a commercial node. Our quick impact analysis is that you're looking at approximately, with the current designation that you have on the site, you can build between 125 to 625 multifamily units within this site. They would be proposing to, that, the 625 units would be if you were to do an integrated mixed-use project. The proposed would take this down, would increase this to 625 multifamily units. You would be reducing the commercial square footage of this site by approximately about a million or so square feet. You would still have the, you would still have some commercial availability on site there. Your trips would be reduced with the multifamily amendment by approximately a few hundred per the designation. And then lastly, we analyzed this really whether or not it's appropriate for the mixed-use or the multifamily residential classification. Staff finds that it really is sort of, it's appropriate for either classification based upon the size of the site, the location along an arterial roadway. Staff finds that however, based upon the city's historic sort of lack of having an adequate commercial base and our, sort of our deficit between commercial and residential future land use classification, staff finds that the long-term best interest for this site is to retain that, that mixed-use land use in order to make sure that you do have a base of commercial development that is available on that site, not only for job opportunities, but also for services to be provided to a pretty large residential base that's out there in the northeast. So staff recommends denial of the amendment request, and then this was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and it was recommended approval by a vote of four to one to approve this amendment. I'm here for any further questions.
Yeah, good job.
For the record, Richard Aiken, I'm the attorney for the applicant in this matter. I want to remind you, we came before you on July 26, 2023. Originally, we asked for continuance, at least in part, to take a second look at what we were going to propose here. We did take that time to take a second look at what we're proposing, and we did reduce the request. What we did was, we've reduced the acreage on which we are seeking the change to multifamily by over five acres. We've done this by adding additional commercial uses along the entirety of Del Prado Boulevard North, and I'll show you that here in a minute. As you can see on the slide before you, you see the entire project is outlined in yellow. It's the yellow triangle. It's on Del Prado Boulevard North at the far eastern end of the city limit. The highlighted area is the entire project. That's not the entire area that we're asking for the change to multifamily, but that is the entire port, our entire project together. It remains vacant at this time. It is bordered to, or bordered by the county to the north and to the east. I think it's important for you to understand that the owner in the last five years has made substantial efforts to market this property as a commercial power center, which is essentially what the staff report is arguing it should be. Despite the substantial efforts that the owner has made to that end, it has been unsuccessful for a number of reasons, and we'll talk a little bit about those in a minute. The request here is to change, and we've reduced the request, but it's now to change the future land use for 19.9 acres to multifamily residential. The remaining 29.15 acres will remain mixed-use future land use and will be developed as commercial out parcels. And you can see, this is the new plan that we took some time to come back to you on. You can see everything in blue is going to be multifamily, and the stuff that remains in pink will stay mixed-use and will be commercial out parcels. You can see everything on Del Prado Boulevard North there is pink, and therefore it's commercial out parcels. Those are 200 foot in depth, and the access to those would be by access road that would be to the rear of the parcels instead of on the front. So that's how we redesigned the project in order to get more commercial on Del Prado Boulevard North, as you can see here. A little bit about the application history. It was filed in July of '22. I won't spend a lot of time of this, time on this since we're a little short on time. Here you can see on the next slide that we have the two plans. On the top is the plan that we originally proposed, and that was what was submitted in the application. That's what went to planning and zoning. Below is what we've changed it to. So the, we now have added 5.14 acres of commercial space. As I said before, the project as a whole will contain a mix of commercial and multifamily uses. The commercial tracts will be 18.9 acres, and the multifamily will be 19.9. The rest of it will be preserved. I want to talk a little bit about the staff report in this case. The staff report is noted, recommends denial. There's a lot in the staff report that we actually found to be favorable and that we agree with. The staff report concluded that the land use was compatible with the surrounding area. We agree with that. It concluded that the proposed amendment would be compatible with the comprehensive plan. We agree with that. It concluded, as you heard from Mr. Boyko, that there was no negative impact on traffic. We also agree with that. Ultimately, the recommendation for denial, as you heard from Mr. Boyko, is because they say that the change would eliminate commercial space from the city's inventory, which the report concludes does not further the goals of increasing economic development or growing the number of non-residential properties. We disagree with this. And while it is certainly true that if this property is developed, if you approve the future of land use map amendment and it's approved as multifamily, ultimately that's going to lead to a use other than, than commercial, the bottom line is that, once the multifamily component came on here, it got interest from developers in actually bringing the commercial portion of this project out of the ground. Once we got the multifamily portion going, once we started talking about that, the commercial, five of the six original commercial out parcels actually went under contract for the first time, once that occurred. So the reality is, we believe that by allowing this amendment, what it's going to do is it's going to actually get the commercial out of the ground, instead of it just being something that could hypothetically be there one day. It's actually going to get it built as part of this plan. So with that, we do think it's, it's consistent with the, with the, we think it's consistent with the future land use. I'm sorry. I'm going to turn it over to Lynda Miller.
Good evening. I'm going to go really fast, too, here. But the property is mixed-use. The land use has been on the property since it was established with, within the city and as part of the Entrada project. The mixed-use land use requires and promotes developments with a mixture of uses. You can see in 2002, we were allowed to have 38 acres being multifamily. In 2005, we're allowed to have 29 acres being multifamily. Today, the amount of multifamily is 9.98 acres, and we're requesting 19.9 acres with our submittal. This is a, talk about commercial nodes. A commercial node is characterized as a 1.1, one-to-one ratio on the corners. You can see where the corners here would be on Del, De Navarra Parkway and also on US 41.
Thank you. I will now open up the public hearing. Did we already do that, Madam City Clerk?
I didn't have that registered in my notes.
Yep. I'll now open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 51-23, please come forward.
Good afternoon. My name is Michael Price. I'm the Director of the Land Division for Land Quest Commercial. I represented Acorn David Famy in the original acquisition of this property in 2018 and have been the one actively marketing this site for sale since that time. Prior to our time being involved, the property had been marketed for sale on and off since the mid-2000s. We've spent the last five years aggressively marketing this property nationally, trying to gain interest from qualified commercial developers. Over the last five years of outreach and in-depth discussions with developers, we've had zero interest in this portion of the property with regards to building a retail center as the previous plans had called for. I cannot emphasize enough the lack of interest at any level from developers for that specific use. We would have loved to sell this project for previously intended use, but cannot force the market to accept a use or project that is not feasible in today's market. There was a graph included from CoStar. CoStar is an internationally recognized, an industry-leading platform for data and analytics within the commercial real estate industry. The graph shows the available square footage for lease within a five-mile radius of this site, and I think that number solidifies the lack of need for a shopping center in this area at this time. Incorporating this multifamily development into this project is a driving factor in making the proposed retail projects on this site viable, not only just those proposed retail projects, but the surrounding commercial as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers. My name is David Famy. I'm the owner of this 49-acre mixed-use property, which allows for multifamily use. This property has been dormant with no commercial buyers willing to purchase any of the property since I bought it in 2018, and it's been on and off the market for sale since 2005. Avalon Engineering, Waypoint Residential, and I met with the city well over a year ago, and based on our positive feedback from pre-application meeting, we moved forward with engineering, architecture, and permitting for Class A 402-unit apartment project. Waypoint Residential is an experienced multifamily developer who has built over 34,000 multifamily units. They build a beautiful Class A project, and they are under contract to purchase the land for the apartment portion of the project. Chris Moore from Waypoint has been working with us on the engineering and design portion of this project shortly after the pre-app meeting with the city, and he is here to answer any of your questions. There's one very important point I would like to make. Once the commercial developers discovered an apartment developer was under contract, that is when we quickly received offers from the experienced commercial developers. Currently, five of the six original commercial out parcels are under contract and in different phases of engineering, architecture, and permitting, along with the apartment portion of the project. As the property owner, I am heavily invested in this project, and we are ready to break ground. I have been contacted by the commercial property owners who own rural land, retail space, and Entrada development, and they support this project because they need the residential units to drive the commercial developments. We have a very shallow 220-foot road frontage on US 41. We have no left end and no right end. That will not support a power center, and I think that's a very important point to make. As a board member of the Entrada HOA, I approved the contract to install the traffic light as quickly as possible on the corner of Del Prado Boulevard and De Navarra Parkway. Due to safety concerns and my desire to work with the city, I personally paid over $355,000 towards the traffic light and associated improvements. I want to thank the City Council for working with the Entrada HOA to speed up the traffic light installation, which I would like to add has already begun. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name's Chris Moore. I'm a Managing Director with Waypoint Residential, the proposed multifamily developer for the project. As David stated, we are a multifamily developer responsible for over 34,000 units acquired and developed just across the Sun Belt. We're looking to make significant investment into Cape Coral, not only in Entrada, but another multifamily site currently in planning on Pine Island off its intersection of Santa Barbara. So before making such a significant commitment to the city of Cape Coral, we commissioned a third-party market study by John Burns Real Estate Consulting, who's a nationally recognized firm, and we also did other due diligence through other platforms, including CoStar and RealPage, which is a well-respected data source. One of the major metrics, in fact, one of the most important metrics we look at on new site criteria and markets is supply and demand. All three studies pointed that supply outweighs demand in the city of Cape Coral for the next two and a half years. Supply starts catching up, demand starts catching up with supply about mid-2025, when these proposed units would come online. Little about the product here. We're looking to build approximately 50% one-bedroom units and probably about 5% or less three-bedroom units. We target young professionals, but also give the option for people who need more, more bedrooms. So since we are so small in three bedrooms, we have a small percentage of school-aged children, which doesn't put a heavy demand on your school system. We agree with the data and feel strongly that supply is a little heavy right now, but demand's coming. We had a slide that didn't pop up that there's proposed to be over 8,500 new resident, or new multifamily renters coming into this market in the next five years, which averages about 1,700 a year. We look forward to working with you on this project and our others, and look to be a participating member in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak on the public hearing? Please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion for ordinance 51-23?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Madam City Attorney? I'm sorry. Mr. City Attorney?
You're done.
And the motion, if it's to approve, there's a revised site plan. I want to make sure that we're, we're clear that, that the approval is for the revised site plan as presented regarding the removal or the inclusion of that additional commercial space. So I want to make sure that that is, that is...
Motion to approve with the revised site plan.
Perfect. Thank you.
Second.
Is there any council discussion on that? Just for me personally, like we've all said before, you know, commercial property is very limited. Mixed-use property is very limited, so I won't be supporting it, only because it's going to be taking, you know, so much commercial property that is in a great location. It may not be ready now, but we only have so much commercial property here in our city, so I won't be supporting it. Thanks. Councilmember Welsh?
Yeah, just a question. If, if changing this to multifamily median or whatever, is there a way that this can be brought into something like a PUD like we're doing with other large commercial tracts where it can be for mixed use, or does this not meet the size requirement for that?
Can you repeat the question?
So, like Academic Village, it's a mixed-use project that has certain requirements that were set forth. Or even Seven Islands had a, like a PUD or PDP, whatever, whichever one it is. Would this tract of land fall into that if they wanted to go that route?
There's some fundamental differences between Seven Islands, Academic Village, and then this property here in particular. Seven Islands has its own land use category that was written specifically for it, which delineates the maximum amount of units, residential square footage, and then it has some design criteria in there as well. It was kind of based upon the Seven Islands plan that was approved by council a few years ago. Academic Village, as far as I know, has no real approvals for it. It has the mixed-use land use classification, but my guess is that you are working with a developer that will be sort of a quasi-developer agreement that will specify what they can and can't build out there. For this, if the land use is the first step, they could come in for a PUD for this project if this were to be approved, but you cannot condition land use amendments to have something, you know, come subsequently thereafter. The land use would be changed, and then the next step for them would be to either modify or remove the existing PDP that's on the site there. They could also do a PUD, which would sort of wipe out the PDP that's existing at that point in time, but the zoning would have to also be changed because the underlying zoning of this property is still commercial zoning, which does not allow for any multifamily development on that site. So the next step would be the zoning change, which would allow for some sort of development. They could do that through your conventional rezone to multifamily low or multifamily medium, or they could do that through a planned unit development project.
So right now, as it states, mixed use would not allow any sort of residential on this property?
The mixed-use designation, as it currently stands, the mixed-use designation allows for residential, but the underlying zoning does not match up to that mixed use in terms of allowing for multifamily units. So if they were to have this approved to the multifamily, they would then have to come in with a zoning change to multifamily either low or medium on that 25 acres or whatever the motion is to take however many acres that have been proposed this evening.
Thank you.
While you're there, Chad, I've got a couple of quick questions since the lights are on. Can you tell us what the mixed-use designation, I understand that we're only talking about the future land use classification here, so we'll just keep it to that topic.
Okay.
With the mixed use, how many multifamily units would be allowed on this 25-acre parcel as is today?
They could do 100, and I have a chart here. They could do a minimum of 125 standalone multifamily units, or they could do 625 multifamily units if they were to integrate that into an integrated mixed-use building where you have some commercial or office on the bottom and then residential on the top, similar, you know, to mixed-use buildings you would see in slightly more urban areas than Cape Coral.
Okay, so we have either 125 or up to 625 if it's constructed a certain way. How about the drawing that they presented today with the acreage? What would they be able to build if we did approve the, if we did approve the multifamily? How many multifamily would they be able to approve with their revised map?
The 25 acres would give them 625 units.
That's not what my question was.
Okay.
My question is, they've revised the map.
Oh, the revised map. We've only seen, I mean, we've only seen that. I would leave that to the applicant. We've only sort of cursory seen that. We haven't done a staff analysis on that, so it's a little tricky to start making analysis on the fly.
Well, we know it's going to probably be RMM because of the size. So how many acres are going to be multifamily in the presentation with the new revised map?
I would leave that to the applicant. I believe they're proposing to have 19 acres.
It's 19.98 acres, and we are still proposing the 402 units. We're not increasing the density over what we were originally proposing, but we're at 19.98 acres.
So if we approve it, what's it, how many units RMM? How many units per acre?
25.
25. So if we did 25 times 19, you know, even if you did 20 acres, it's 500. So I'm just trying to get a good understanding of, you know, what the actual difference is there, or if we leave it as is, they still have the capability of doing the 625 if it's a mixed-use type project. So, you know, for me, they could still get to the 400 units. They may just have to construct it a little differently than maybe they want to. Just another reason why I would, my motion will be for denial.
Can I state one additional thing, counsel? And I know this is only related to the motion that has been made to have that revised legal and/or plan that was proposed. Staff's opinion on sort of any revision to that would be that the issue is that they're taking, they're reducing what they're asking for with that. However, the resulting mixed use that you have along there would still allow for 20% multifamily residential to be developed there. So if that was to be the route that was desired to go with with that revision, is that staff would, you know, from a professional opinion, would like to see the entire application come back and then split up that land use so that you're still, you are fully retaining that frontage area along Del Prado to be commercial. So it would be a two-part land use amendment where you would go from mixed use to multifamily for that one area that they're looking at, and then they would take the remaining, remainder out parcels to commercial professionals so that you're ensuring that those will be commercial and not, you know, they would still have that ability to have multifamily of 20% along the entire frontage of Del Prado. I don't know if that's the way the council is leaning to have, to go with that revised legal description and site plan, but staff's opinion is if you want to make sure and ensure that the commercial will be retained along Del Prado and De Navarro Parkway, we would see some sort of revision to what their application currently is.
Can I just add, though, our zoning is commercial already, and in order to have additional multifamily residential in any of those areas along Del Prado extension, we would have to do a zoning change for that. So right now, currently, we have mixed-use land use with a commercial zoning district. So only thing that we can develop on those parcels along Del Prado would be commercial uses.
Yeah, and for the future, I don't know how staff's position is on this, but one of the things that I'm a little uncomfortable with is we're kind of changing things on the fly, you know, and I know staff has, I'm sure, met with the developer, met with Avalon. They've had a discussion, but here at the 11th hour, we're kind of changing exactly what we discussed and all. So we kind of throw all those other conversations that we've had up to this point out the window. You know, to me, if we're going to do that, you vote on whatever the application was, you vote no, and then you go back to the drawing board. You know, Chad just made a good point here, you know, instead of making those multi- or mixed use, you may want to change it to commercial, you know. So there's a lot of unknowns still here, for me, anyway. So I just think in the future, it would be nice, you know, if we're going to go down this path and have a hearing, let's have a hearing on all the information that was presented instead of changing it at the last minute, probably because they knew that it wasn't going to be passed before. So that's why they made the change. And that's okay, but let's just start the process and give staff the opportunity to weigh in and have those discussions. That's where I'm at. I don't see any other lights on, any other discussion. Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Can you restate the motion, please?
I have a motion to approve Ordinance 51-23 with the revised site plan.
You got something, Chad?
I think the discussion is that we should do, based upon the revised legal description that they would be providing to us, not a site plan because that's not an actual legal boundary. So we would need to have a legal description that they would submit to us. We revise it upon that, which is another peculiarity of this.
All right. Like I said, this is what happens when you change things in the middle of the road, for me. So, Madam City Clerk, call the roll.
May I please clarify if the motion was changed to match the recommendation from Planner Boyko, or is it still with revised site plan?
It was, the motion was with the revised site plan.
Thank you. Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
No.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Welsh?
No.
Cosden?
Aye.
Cummings?
God.
Can I ask one quick question?
No.
No, you got to, it's a yes or no. We've had 40 minutes of questions.
I know. No.
No.
Enter, no. So that's three ayes, four nays, motion failed.
Okay, it's 7:10. I think we'll take a break here. Won't we come back at 7:30? Won't we come back at seven thirty?
Okay, I'll call the meeting back to order. We're gonna move on to Ordinance 54-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 54-23, An Ordinance Amending the City of Cape Coral Comprehensive Plan by Amending the Future Land Use Map from Rural (a Lee County designation) to Pine Island Road District Land Use. For property described as two parcels of land lying in the west one-half of the northeast one-quarter of the northwest one-quarter of Section 21 Township 44 South Range 23 East Lee County Florida. Said parcels of land being more particularly described herein. Property located at 2120 and 2200 Southwest Pine Island Road, providing severability and an effective date.
Chad, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. For the record, Chad Boyko, Principal Planner with the City's Plan Division. I will not need five minutes for this one. This is a privately initiated land use amendment application. The applicant is Walco Leasing. This is two parcels along Pine Island Road. It's a little over fifteen acres in size. There are utilities available to the site. And then the applicant is asking for a future land use map amendment from a Lee County designation to the Pine Island Road District designation. This is the second step of a three-step entitlement process. This property was recently annexed into the city of Cape Coral earlier this year. They are looking to fill in the, a hole in the Pine Island Road District that exists along Pine Island Road. This is south of Pine Island Road. This is just a little bit to the southeast of the Cape Coral Town Center, a little south of the German American Club. There would take unincorporated Lee County designated property to the Pine Island Road District. Maximum FAR of the Pine Island Road District is 1.25. You'd be looking at a little over three-quarters of a million square feet if this was developed to its full commercial potential. Usually, everything is usually done at a much lower intensity than that. It does allow for a maximum density of 25 units per acre, which would give you a maximum density of 378 units. This is along a commercial node. It meets six of the commercial siting guidelines. It is partially consistent with two of the commercial siting guidelines. And our recommendation is approval of the amendment to the Pine Island Road District. And the Plan Zoning Commission also recommended approval of Ordinance 54-23. I'm here for any further questions.
Okay, now open up public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on Ordinance 54-23, please come forward.
Good evening again. This Linda Miller, Vice President of Avalon Engineering, representing Walco Leasing LLC on the Future Land Use Map Amendment, Bloom 23-5. As Chad brought up on exhibit here, these two parcels are adjacent to and across the street from an existing city of Cape Coral property that has a future land use of Pine Island Road District. Pine Island Road is, District is really the only district that we can assign these two parcels to. So we're requesting approval of a land use map amendment to establish a Cape Coral land use for these two parcels. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on Ordinance 54-23? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd? Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to Ordinance 22-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 22-23, An Ordinance Approving the Sale of Municipal Surplus Real Property Described as Parcels of Land Lying in Sections 30 and 31 Township 43 South Range 24 East Lee County Florida, and Being More Particularly Described Herein, Containing Approximately 180.65 Acres Pursuant to Section 2-155 of the City of Cape Coral Code of Ordinances. Authorizing and Directing the Mayor and Clerk to Execute a Deed at Closing, Conveying the aforementioned surplus real property to CAP5 Development LLC. Property located at the northwest corner of Del Prado Boulevard and Kismet Parkway, Providing Severability and an Effective Date.
Madam Assistant City Attorney?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Connie Behren, Assistant City Manager.
City Manager, not City Attorney, I'm sorry.
Did you call me City Attorney?
Yeah.
I'm going to go through the presentation that we provided to City Council at the Committee of the Hall meeting. And then I have representatives here from TRG and also their attorney, Terry Kramer and Chad Clevenger are here as well. The history of the academic village site, a lot of things happened in February. In February of 2003, Council approved the purchase of about 171 acres in the northeast Cape for 6.8 million with intent to create an academic village. We also acquired additional adjacent parcels that brought the size from 171 to 180-plus acres. The city tried to market the property on numerous occasions and over the years to, for various purposes. Initially, it was for educational use, but we never had any takers on that, so the property sat dormant for a number of years. In 2019, the city was required to purchase $900,000 in freshwater mitigation credits that was required for monitoring the conservation easement, the 42-acre conservation easement on the property. In 2021, the City Council amended the comp plan and changed the use to mixed use to provide us more opportunities out there. And then in 2022, February last year, the City Council declared the property as surplus property, which gave us the ability to market it to a potential developer. The timeline for soliciting offers began last year in March, and you can see there were many key points during the, during the year that we had negotiations. We selected the vendor and then we ranked TRG number one and started negotiations both internally and then externally. Earlier this year, we came to a consensus on terms, and we have presented those terms to you at a committee hall in July. To hit on some of the deal points, the purchase price is seventeen and a half million dollars. The appraised value in March of '22 was 13.2 million. They will be providing a $200,000 deposit to escrow within five days of Council's approval. They will provide another 325,000 deposit to escrow within five days after the due diligence period, and the due diligence period is 90 days. And it can be extended up to three times for another 30 days, and each time they request an extension, they are required to put in a non-refundable $20,000 into escrow. They do commit to spend at least 250,000 during their due diligence period. The balance will be, at closing, will be after the due diligence. They are looking at a planned unit development zoning district, and the buyer will apply for that. The application will include the following uses. They have to do a minimum of 3% commercial. That's a minimum. They can do more, but they have to at least hit a minimum of 3%. They are required to do at least 15% of light industrial. They can do more and most likely will do more light industrial. They are limited to 10% to 20% of the property as a maximum for residential. The buyer has 270 days after the due diligence expires to rezone the property to PUD and obtain the approved site plan. We will close 30 days after either the expiration of the approval period or after they receive an approved site plan. We will continue to work with the buyer throughout the process to ensure a smooth transition and a smooth transaction, and we'll, in order to keep the project on schedule. TRG was, is not going to do their presentation. It was basically informational, but they are here if you have any questions. I have Terry Kramer with Wilbur Smith, and then I also have Chad Clevenger here with the TRG developer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Terry Kramer from Wilbur Smith and Chad Clevenger from TRG.
Before you, before you get into that, sir, let me open up the public hearing. I know, open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on Ordinance 22-23, please come forward. Now, you got it.
Okay. I already introduced myself.
That's a formality, I'm sorry.
Okay, I already introduced myself. We have a presentation. You've already seen it, same presentation, so if you want to see it again, let us know. But we're here to answer any questions. Chad, I know, is gonna address the issue that we had at the Cal meeting about this residential component. I know that's important to y'all. I just wanted to remind, the same response we had at the presentation was that we ultimately have to come through, through with the PUD back to this board. So you have the ultimate power to decide that 10% to 20%, so we can address it at that point. But I want Chad to just walk through some of the points on our project, and if you have any questions, we're here to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Just wanted to point out like we-
State your name.
Sorry, Chad Clevenger.
Thank you.
Just wanted to point out what Terry brought up here, that obviously the main component of this is commercial and flex industrial with an element potentially of cold storage, like we discussed last end of July. So that's gonna be the main goal here. We do have that 10% to 20% residential built into the contract, and to Terry's point, you know, we definitely will take your thoughts and comments into consideration as we move forward with the PUD and ultimate site plan. We feel it's, you know, there's a good opportunity to have a little bit of everything there and create a buffer to the north, commercial down along Del Prado, and then, you know, our flex space industrial, cold storage kind of toward the rear or west of the site. Obviously, meeting the minimums and not exceeding the maximums.
Okay, thank you. All right. Anyone else wishing to speak during the public hearing? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 22-23?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call, hold on, Councilmember Long.
So note was brought up in the presentation by the applicant. I just wanted to clarify that we're not obligating ourselves to these minimums as far as the commercial, the discussion that we previously had, and is that, is that baked into the contract itself? I mean, is that, are those, is that language? I don't know why I only received the first page in the contract, but-
The, the, some of the contract was included in the backup. You got the first page because there were some, we had to make some minor modifications because we had to correct some of the acreage, which I also didn't want to remind the mayor that when you make, that the motion has to be read-
Yes.
The way that, okay. So yes, those are in the, in the contract.
So why wouldn't that have been addressed based on the discussion that we had at the last meeting as part of the contract that's brought to us over a month later? I'm just curious. I mean, I understand we have-
You're talking about the residential portion.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, go ahead. Why, has it changed yet?
I thought we were under the impression that we were gonna be moving through with the PUD and the site planning. You have ultimate control at that time to kick it down to 15, 10, you know, I mean, we have that 10% to 20% maximum. I know you referenced minimums there a second ago, so, you know, 3% for commercial, I think it's 15 for light industrial. Obviously, we have to exceed those. There's no other way to not exceed those.
Well, not to hash a discussion that apparently I'm the only one of the opinion that we should be having, but you, you know, you stated, and we had, we'd already cited these issues or these concerns, is you just said, oh, this is primarily commercial with light industrial, but the largest number for the minimum here, oh, never mind, I see that it's a maximum, it's 20%. So I don't wanna get in a position where we go too far down this road and we don't address it now, and then we keep saying, oh, well, we can, you know, we can get to the end of the very last thing, and at the PUD, we can't come to a consensus on what the commercial, collectively, we decide that the minimum commercial should be, and all this was for nothing. I guess that's my only concern, is that we go too far continuing to put off that we'll have that discussion for another day without clearly expressing to you guys our collective desires as far as what we want to see here, and then we've wasted everyone's time.
No, and I understand your position. I think, obviously, based on the minimums and the one that's maximum, where you're gonna see far more commercial and far more light industrial slash flex space to get to those, you know, that ultimate 100%. I know that's obviously what you guys are looking for, more, less residential, more commercial, more, more light flex.
And just to add, as part of going through staff negotiating this, that was the idea that they put a maximum residential, knowing that it's city property and they wanted to see a commercial industrial project. So that's how we came to the 20% cap so that the property wouldn't go and be sold, and we turned to a residential project. So they set a cap, 20% maximum residential, the rest has to be either industrial or commercial. So I think we hit what the council's looking to do. The issue is whether residential's somewhere between 10% and 20% of the project, and that's what we're saying, we go through the PUD process and we submit a site plan. We wanted to have that flexibility to make our project really work for us, and so that's, that's kind of how we got there.
Okay, I appreciate the clarification. I just want to make it clear here that we don't continue to go down this road, and then at the end of the day, we're pigeonholed because we've signed the contract and we've gone through the triple due diligence periods, and then we can't come to an agreement. So as long as, as we're under the same assumption that that's the way we're gonna move forward, then that's okay with me. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, I think it's important to just spend a couple minutes here in light of the question. So Connie, can you please go to Slide 6 that discusses the application for the PUD? Okay, so what I'd like to do is just point out the conservation easement represents 23% of the property. They are limited to a maximum of 20% residential. But when you sum those up, you have 43%. The remaining 57% of the entire property has to be a mix of commercial and light industrial, of which at least 3% of that 57 would have to be commercial. So we didn't want them to have 100% of the balance as light industrial. We wanted some commercial on the property, and we also didn't want them to have zero light industrial, so we had, we put minimums on there. So if you approve this contract, you're approving that a majority of the percentages on the property will be a non-residential use. If they do not go to the maximum 20%, then they'd be bringing forward a PUD that actually could be upward. If you went at the, at the lower end, it would only be 33%, and they would be bringing a PUD that would be 67% non-residential. Is that clear?
My, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
My point is that if you, if you knock out the 23% conservation easement, that's over a quarter of the usable practical space in the PUD that's being dedicated to the 20% residential.
That's not, that's not part of the usable space. That's, that's 23% of the approximate 180 acres already has a conservation easement over it.
Correct, which you can't, which you cannot improve upon.
Correct. So are you concerned that, that 20% is, is not clear that it is of the remaining usable and that it could end up being actually, oh, okay. No, the intent of, okay, so that's a good question. The intent of that 20% is to be of the entirety, not just the remaining acreage less the 23%.
Okay, thank you.
I think we had this conversation before. I thought that we kind of expressed we wanted to try to lean closer to the 10% versus the 20% if my memory serves me correctly. You know, I think hopefully you've heard counsel in kind of what our, what our desire is, and, you know, I'd hate to waste your time or, or staff's time, you know, if we're not somewhat close to that when you bring back that PUD. You know, so, like you said, we have a second bite at the apple, but, you know, hopefully you kind of hear what our, our concerns and desires are, and, you know, we can, we can make it work. I understand that, you know, you have a bottom line that you have to make work as well, but, you know, hopefully we can, we can find that middle ground to make sure we're all where we need to be.
Thank you, Mayor. Our goal is to work with the city of Cape Coral. We want to do this project. We think it's gonna be a great project for the city of Cape Coral, so we're gonna work together throughout the process. We, we hear what you're saying, and we're gonna do everything we can to make the council mayor as well as city staff happy and make sure this is a positive project for the city of Cape Coral.
Sounds great, and we look forward to it. I just wanted to, if we're gonna make a motion for approval on this particular ordinance, there's two amendments that need to be made as a part of the motion. First being, we need to update the ordinance title reflecting the approximate acreage from the 180.65 to 172.533 acres. And the second thing is we have to update Page 1 of the contract reflecting Line 5 as the 172.533 acres and in Line 11 as 32 strap ID numbers. Anybody wants to make the motion and they need this?
I'd like to amend my motion to include the two points that the mayor just stated. Or do I actually have to read them out?
Second, second agrees.
Okay. All right, is there any other discussion?
Can I?
Did I, I closed the public hearing?
You did. And I respectfully, can I add one more thing to that motion? I noticed the 180-plus acres, it is throughout the ordinance document, not just in the title. So anytime there's the appearance of 180.65 acres, permission to update that?
Agreed.
One second.
Second agrees.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't see any other discussion. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to-
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. Move on to Ordinance 61-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 58-23, An Ordinance Amending the City of Cape Coral Code of Ordinances, Chapter 19, Water and Sewer Utilities, Article 13. Code of Ordinances, Chapter nineteen, Water and Sewer Utilities, Article thirteen, Protection of Public Water System, regarding the protection against the backflow of water into the public water system, providing for type of protection, providing for frequency of inspection of protective device, providing for processed waters, providing for marking safe and unsafe water lines, providing for penalties for non-compliance, providing severability and an effective date.
Okay, turn it over to staff. Mr. Pearson?
Thank you. Good evening, Jeff Pearson, Utilities Director. Have a short presentation for you. We'll run through that real quick. Back on May thirty-first, this item was brought before the Committee of the Whole Meeting, and I received council's feedback and implemented that feedback into the ordinance that is before you this evening. Some of the key ordinance changes that we have in this exercise of, of changing the ordinance, number one is, of course, to achieve a hundred percent backflow prevention compliance. Any property owners who do not want to hire a private backflow company to conduct their annual testing, reporting, and/or make repairs will be billed on their next utility bill rather than us toting the note. Also, the customers will retain the right to hire their own licensed backflow contractor. And compliance must occur within thirty days after notice of non-compliance. It may eliminate the need to turn off water service for non-compliant multifamily and commercial businesses. It allows city representatives to enter property to ensure compliance. We also, some of the housekeeping items is that we change the name from the Health Department to DEP, who now regulates drinking water in Lee County. And it, we believe it provides added protection to prevent contamination to our drinking water system. And now I'm available for any questions that you may have at this time. Thank you.
Okay, I now open up public hearing. Anyone here to speak on ordinance fifty-eight dash twenty-three, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve fifty-eight dash twenty-three?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I don't see any other discussion, and I think I was probably the lone no before, and I'll continue to be. I don't believe it's local government's responsibility to be doing work on private businesses and their, and their backflow preventers. My vote will be no, just like it was when we had the discussion. Thank you. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Gunter?
No.
That is six ayes, one nay, motion carried.
Okay, move on to ordinance sixty-one dash twenty-three. Madam City Clerk, please read title.
Ordinance sixty-one dash twenty-three, an ordinance amending City of Cape Coral Ordinance thirty-two dash twenty-three, which amended ordinance four dash twenty-three, which amended ordinance eighty-one dash twenty-two, which adopted the City of Cape Coral Operating Budget, Revenues and Expenditures and Capital Budget for Fiscal Year two thousand twenty-three, by increasing the total revenues and expenditures by a total of forty-one million, four hundred, one thousand, eight hundred dollars, providing severability and an effective date.
Good evening, Mr. Mason.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, Mark Mason, Financial Services Director. I have a short presentation here for you, at least I hope so. Again, the purpose of the ordinance is governed by Florida Statute one sixty-six point two forty-one three, that we can amend the ordinance anytime during the course of the year and within sixty days at the end of the fiscal year. So we're amending, this is the third budget amendment out of four. We expect one more before the end of the fiscal year. And we're recognizing basically council actions that have occurred during the course of the last three months, as well as any personal services, operating capital adjustments. Overview quickly, forty-one million, four hundred, one thousand, eight hundred dollar change from the amended ordinance to the, to this ordinance, with a total budget of one point one billion dollars. It represents a three point seven six percent increase, and of that increase, thirty-three point four percent is associated with items that were approved during the course of the fiscal year, during that, the last quarter, as well as other adjustments representing eighteen percent, or seven point five million, and one item to adjust the Hurricane Ian Project by twenty million dollars, with the expected expenses that we expect to occur not only this year but into next year. Of the, of the items that were previously approved, sixteen items were approved, resolutions, various resolutions impacting the, impacting the overall budget in various funds. Other adjustments, one point eight million dollars with the full cost allocation adjustment. We transferred money from the operating, fire operating from the general fund to the special revenue fund, and this was part of a grant, hundred and seventy thousand dollars, increase in the six cent gas tax and solid waste to the expected annual expenditures, offset by revenues associated therewith. Reclassification of fire inspectors from the building code fund to the fire operating fund, that's where the revenues were being recorded, so we needed to put the expenses in the same place. An amended self-insurance award from Blue Cross Blue Shield, or blue, for Boo, of fifty thousand. We also reclass charter school maintenance from one, from a capital project fund to a special revenue fund, and academic village, these, we have costs that we continue to maintain, the academic village for exotic treat, exotic plant treatments, forty-two thousand dollars. We have a number of capital project funds needed adjusted with funding for the boat ramps, Orinia Vista, et cetera, three hundred and forty-six thousand, Transportation Capital Project Fund, adjusted the funding for Nicholas Parkway West for seven hundred and seventeen thousand, and the Stormwater Capital Project Fund, decrease in the overall budget for moving expenditures from Capital Project Fund, the harvest, aquatic harvest, vegetation harvesting in the South Spreader, five hundred thousand. Hurricane Ian adjustment, two, additional twenty-one million dollars that will bring the total project estimate to a hundred and two million, a hundred and two million dollars. We don't expect to have any more adjustments necessary for this particular fund. Personnel adjustments, we've added a deputy city attorney, a records coordinator, and a deputy utilities director. These positions will, after, well, we've already done the deputy city attorney, but the records coordinator as well as the deputy utilities director have approved tonight. They'll be posted for hiring for tomorrow. And we had a number of personnel adjustments during the third quarter, number of positions added with Development Services. As you can tell, we're adding additional seven FTEs for Development Services. And I'm here for any questions.
All right, I now open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance sixty-one dash twenty-three, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance sixty-one dash twenty-three?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to the next one, I believe that's sixty-four dash twenty-three, or sixty-three?
Sixty-three.
Sixty-three dash twenty-three. Madam City Clerk, please read title.
Ordinance sixty-three dash twenty-three, an ordinance approving the First Amendment to the lease agreement between the City of Cape Coral and PPW Cape Coral LLC for the lease of property owned by the City of Cape Coral at four hundred Santa Barbara Boulevard, known as Sun Splash Water Park, authorizing the mayor to execute the First Amendment, providing for severability and an effective date.
Okay, thank you. I'll turn it over to our Assistant City Manager. I got to write that down.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Connie Behren, Assistant City Manager, and Kirk Cafrey is here with me from Pro Parks. We're going to go through this presentation as quickly as we can because we have the five minutes, but we are basically coming back to council with a, another option regarding a, the funding of the wave pool. Some of the suggestions that were made was maybe to go back and see if we can come up with a different revenue sharing option, and we were able to come up with that, and we'd like to present that to you.
So, so real quickly, and great to see you all again, but just wanted to update you again, we had spoken at the end of the meeting we had last time about our first year performance, two thousand and twenty-two. You might recall, we, we signed the lease back in October or November of two thousand and twenty-one, so last year was our first year in operations, and we saw about a twenty percent increase in the overall productivity of the business. Real excited we were able to produce that, and as part of that original lease agreement, we were required to make quite a few improvements to the park. Some of those photos are shown here, I'll briefly touch on them. We redid the children's play area and rethemed it as Little Sharkies Reef. We've added numerous new food products, we added thirty-two cabanas to the property. We also added more amenities for our guests, you know, new, new food products and new lounge spaces. In addition to that, we, we feel very confident as an organization, and you guys know our background at Pro Parks is, we specifically just operate water parks. This type of an investment will really yield great results in the long term for us, and our guests keep asking us for more ways to get, you know, immersed in Bay of the Loaf type products like a wave pool. So as Connie mentioned earlier, we worked closely since our last meeting to change some of the economics up, and we'll go through that as well. Did you want to talk to that, Connie?
The changes and modifications that we are proposing to the lease, they were mostly have to do with the rent, but they, we are changing one section in the, in Section one point two that changes how the city can actually buy out the lease, basically. So at the end of ten years, we can buy out the lease, and the, we'll have to do that with a payment of one million dollars. We wanted to make sure that the city continued to have the option to take over the water park at any point in time that city council deemed that that was a step that they wanted to take, so at the end of ten years, we can do that with the payment of one million. With regard to the additional rent, originally, we were, when we came here earlier this year, we, we were going to be able to collect two, two, from two point one million to four million, the city was going to collect its fifteen percent. After four million, then it was going to drop down to seven and a half percent sharing, and they would get the other seven and a half. What we have negotiated now is we still maintain the two point one, it's actually two point one to four point five million dollars at fifteen percent, and from four point five million up to six million, we will get ten percent. After that six million, then our, our percentage would drop down to seven and a half percent. The additional, the additional rent structure will only become effective after the wave pool is completed, and, and we also have to build the parking lot as we talked about before. The maintenance repairs, basically just made some modifications based on updates of what they've already completed. As far as the financial impacts, the net present value, I actually have to have my glasses on, even to read this, so, all right, all right. So over the, over the period of time from two thousand and twenty-four to two thousand and fifty-one, with this new structure, the city will collect twenty-three million, over twenty-three million dollars in revenue. The net present value, and that's assuming a four point five percent growth in revenues, the net present value of that is about twelve and a half million dollars. When you factor in the cost of the wave pool that the city is, is also building to support the, the wave pool, did I say the wave pool?
We're building the wave pool.
Yeah, I did. The cost of the parking lot that we will be building in support of the wave pool, that three million dollars reduces that net present value down to about nine and a half million dollars. As you can see, when you compare that to what we would do if we did nothing, there is a difference of about four hundred thousand dollars there. The value, though, of the parking lot will be more than just for the wave pool, though. We also have the expansion that's going on with the Lake Kennedy Racquet Center that council approved, doing the entire expansion with thirty-two courts, thirty-two pickleball courts, and then all the tennis courts. So we expect with a lot of events going on there that that parking lot will be utilized by not just the, the patrons of Sun Splash, but also people who, who will be competing in tournaments at the racquetball center. And that's about all I have for right now. If you have any more questions, we're here to answer those.
Okay, I'll now open up public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance sixty-three dash twenty-three, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance sixty-three dash twenty-three?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any council discussion? Councilmember Welsh?
Thank you. Connie, I know that you kind of went back after our first discussion of denying this and did the tiered approach. My only concern is this isn't really equal steps. I was hoping to see, you know, not such a leap from the top to the bottom. So I would be more in favor of this if it wasn't a ten percent as step two, but eleven point two five. Was that something discussed in the negotiations that you had with Pro Parks of potentially going a more level decline?
No, we discussed the fifteen, ten, and seven and a half.
Okay. I didn't know if, if we even brought the eleven point two five in there, or tried to keep it equal, or in equal value of the range of dollars, or we're just trying to, to me, it seems like you got an idea, and it just, it looks better on paper to make us happy with the decision, but to me personally, I don't, I don't want to stop this, but I would be more in favor if the ten percent moved to eleven point two five. I don't know if any other council has that desire, so, you know, if, if not, fine with me, but I don't know if that's a deal breaker on Pro Parks' end as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Cummings?
I think we also need to take in a factor there, Councilman Welsh, that the inflation has really gone up, and it's very expensive to even operate anything right now, and knowing that, like, just the cost of goods, so I, I'm, thank you for coming back and bringing these numbers up, and I know that we talked about this last time, and going up from a little over seven percent to ten percent is a good, to me, I think it's definitely good that he was willing to negotiate like this, so just take that in factor. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Long?
Yeah, can you, real quickly, please, if you recall the previous terms that we had, that have come before us, that we ended up not moving forward with?
What the previous terms were?
Yeah.
The previous terms were, the city would continue, would collect from, from two point one million to four million, fifteen percent. And then after four million, that would drop down to seven and a half percent.
Okay.
We raised that threshold to four point five in that first tier. You picked up an extra four hundred thousand at fifteen percent.
Sure. I see that. Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
No.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Welsh?
No.
Cosden?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Gunter?
No.
That's four ayes, three nays, motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the next one, which is sixty-four dash twenty-three. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance sixty-four dash twenty-three, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cape Coral, Florida, establishing the CC Community Development District located within the municipal boundaries of the City of Cape Coral, Florida, containing approximately one hundred thirty point two seven acres pursuant to Chapter one ninety, Florida statutes, providing for the establishment of the boundaries for the CC Community Development District, providing for the designation of the initial board members, providing for the district name, providing for statutory provisions governing the district, providing for severability and an effective date.
Good evening, Chad, again.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. For the record, Chad Boyko, Principal Planner with the City's Plan Division. This is ordinance sixty-four dash twenty-three. This is the creation of the CC, C, D, D, CC, CCD. This is regarding to the upcoming Cape Coral Town Center project. You can see it is located just north of Highland Road, near where the German American Club is currently. The project details for this is you're creating a community development district. It's approximately one hundred and thirty acres in size. The proposed development is about thirteen hundred residential units, about a hundred, about one hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet of office, one hundred and forty thousand, one hundred and forty-three thousand square feet of restaurant, a little over two hundred and square feet of office, 143,000 square feet of restaurant, a little over 200,000 square feet of retail, 125 hotel units, and then 1,200 parking garage spaces that would be contained within this Cape Coral Town Center project. CDDs are authorized by Florida statute in order to be able to sort of levy taxes and pay for infrastructure. The legislation was considered a major advancement in managing growth effectively and efficiently. These will have to, the CDDs will have to operate with regulations with the state statute and local governments. And whenever they have these meetings for the CDDs, they will be open to the public and will be subject to sunshine law. A CDD is an independent special purpose unit of local government. It's established at the request of a developer or a landowner with the local government's approval, and it's regulated by Chapter 190 of Florida statutes. And we mentioned earlier that the main powers of the CDDs are to plan, finance, construct, operate, and maintain infrastructure in a certain particular area and provide services for the benefit of the residents within that area. It's a legal entity with powers to enter contracts, own real and personal properties, adopt bylaws, rules, regulations, orders, assesses taxes, and assessments for construction and operation of maintenance and public facility costs. We do have some current existing CDDs within Cape Coral currently. We have two of them. One of them is located in Bellevita, which is in the northeastern portion of the state of Cape Coral. That's a more residential based CDD. And we have another one that was approved earlier, earlier this year or just last year within the stone water residential development. The proposed infrastructure for the CDD, the first thing you're going to notice is just sort of the on the ground underneath sort of infrastructure that goes along with this, stormwater management, water, sewer utilities, public spaces, landscape, hardscape, and we decorate streetlights, parking structures. Estimated cost of approval is around $70 million for these, the infrastructure improvements. And then lastly, our recommendation is approval of ordinance 64-23. I'm here for any further questions.
Hey, thank you. I'll now open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on 64-23, please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Jonathan Johnson with the Law Firm of Q-Tech Rock. On behalf of the petitioner, with me is Cindy Cruz. We wanted to thank staff for their assistance in navigating the process and getting the petition and the ordinance before you tonight. We do believe that the supporting materials, the petition, and the other materials in your backup show compliance with the statute for and justify the approval of the CDD. We really just are here to answer questions in the event that you have them and hope for your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak on 64-23? Seeing none, public hearings now closed. Is there a motion to approve 64-23?
Motion to approve.
Second. Is there any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Costin?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to ordinance 65-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 65-23, an ordinance of City Council of the City of Cape Coral, Florida, establishing the Victory Park Community Development District located within the municipal boundaries of the City of Cape Coral, Florida, containing approximately 137.39 acres pursuant to Chapter 190 Florida statutes, providing for the establishment of the boundaries for the Victory Park Community Development District, providing for the designation of the initial board members, providing for the district name, providing for statutory provisions governing the district, providing for severability and an effective date.
Right. Good evening, Mayor Chad Boyko, once again, Principal Planner with the City's Plan Division. This can be a lot similar to the presentation you just heard. This is 65-23. This is for the Victory Park CDD. This is located northeast portion of Cape Coral. This is near where the VA clinic is and the Army Reserve Site. It's a little bit north of Pile Island Road, and it's actually north of Diplomat Parkway. It's approximately 137 acres. You're looking at a proposed development of around 125 hotel units, around 300 garden apartments, 112 townhouses, a little over 200,000 square feet of post-secondary education, a little over a half million of commercial and office space, 25,000 square feet of retail, and a little over a quarter of a million of light industrial space within this project boundary. Once again, these CDDs were established by Florida statute. They allow for levying taxes and assessments for infrastructure purposes. For this CDD, the potential infrastructure you're looking at is stormwater management, water distribution, irrigation, utilities, offsite improvements, and then the estimated cost of improvements for this is going to be around $37 million. And then, once again, staff recommends approval of ordinance 65-23.
Thank you. I know the public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 65-23, please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Gregor Bantsett, Coleman, Yovanovich, and Castor, Attorney for Victory Park Group. Our team is back here today. We appreciate the staff's presentation. We think it accurately reflects the intent of what we're attempting to do by the formation of the CDD. And we think it supports the under Chapter 190, the criteria for establishment of the CDD. And as I said, our team is here to the extent you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak on 65-23? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there any council discussion? Is there a motion to approve 65-23?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Costin?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to 68-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title, ordinance 68-23.
Ordinance 68-23, an ordinance approving the license agreement between the City of Cape Coral, a Florida municipal corporation, and Sun Broadcasting, Inc., a Florida corporation, for the temporary use of Sun Broadcasting, Inc. of a portion of city managed property known as Bernice Braden Park, to plant American flags to honor the lives lost in the September 11th, 2001 attacks, providing an effective date.
Good afternoon, Ms. Andrews.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council Members, Dawn Andrews with the Public Works Property Management. Ordinance 68-23 is requesting the approval to enter into a license agreement with Sun Broadcasting, Inc. Sun Broadcasting has requested the temporary use of a portion of the Bernice Braden Park to plant the American flags to honor the lives lost in the September 11th, 2001 attacks. This is the third annual event honoring the 9/11 victims by Sun Broadcasting. They've done it in Naples, then they went to Fort Myers, and now they'd like to bring it to Cape Coral. The park is located to the east of the Cape Coral Chamber of Commerce property. The flags will be displayed from September 4th through the 12th. Flags will be provided by Sun Broadcasting, and they will have people that will be planting the flags along the park property. There's no cost to the city, and I can throw a map up on the overhead real quick. Maybe real quick. You changed the buttons, so we won't do a map.
I've been trained on the button.
It's different. Sorry. So it's right at the foot of the South Cape Coral Bridge as you come in from Fort Myers, over here on the north side of Cape Coral Parkway. And I can stand by for any questions you may have.
Now, open up public hearing. Anyone here wishing to speak on ordinance 68-23, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 68-23?
Motion to approve.
Second. And just real quickly on this, this individual reached out to me maybe month and a half ago, I think it was. I forwarded it to the city manager's office. You know, his goal was just to come in and put the flags up in an area where, you know, they could be seen. So I think this is a great area that's, you know, has a lot of travel each and every day, so I'm glad we could accommodate him. So, Councilmember Welsh.
Yeah, I had some questions on this earlier, but reading the backup, I see it's 2,900 flags. So my question was, how big are these flags? And I'm assuming now seeing the number of 2,900, it's not 2,900 flag poles being constructed and those flags being erected. So looking through the actual backup now, I see these are probably just small pushing the ground flags and the number. Now, is this being donated? There's no sort of sponsorship element to this that will get any recognition for our business other than, it's not like Sun Broadcasting is putting a banner up with this.
Mr. City Manager.
So that's actually some of the due diligence that we had to do with Sun Broadcasting. There is some restrictions on the property. This is actually sovereign submerged state-owned lands, and so they're not allowed to generate any revenue or any type of mark, anything that would benefit them. So they confirmed that they are not selling spots, selling advertisements, selling any marketing, generating any revenue from this. So that, once we cleared that, then we were, we were good to advance.
Yeah, I assume that to be true, but I just wanted to have it stated on the record in case we ever get those questions from someone driving by and sees it. Thank you.
And I wanted to state, and there's no charge for the public to come.
Thank you. No more questions.
Okay. Seeing no other discussion, we have a motion second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Costin?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Move on to ordinance 56-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 56-23, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 6, Pensions, Division 3, General Employees Pension, to update names of salary schedules and to include a buy-up and COLA increase provision for members employed prior to September 30th, 2013, providing severability and an effective date.
Mr. City Manager, going to be any staff presentation on this?
There is not, but I can answer any questions you have.
Yeah, I know we got most of the information or backup material, but any questions for the city manager or any discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion second.
Motion to approve.
Second. Madam City Clerk, do I still got to open up the hearing?
Thank you.
Okay, hold on a minute. I was trying to go back. That was what, 54?
56.
56.
56, 23.
Well, now, open public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 56-23? Please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve? We got a motion, a second. No discussion. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Costin?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to the introductions.
I think there's one more.
One more? There was one more.
Yeah.
56, 206-23, did we, is that the one we pulled? No? Okay. Resolution 206-23, Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution 206-23, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Cape Coral approving and ratifying an agreement between the city and the International Union of Painters and Allied Trades, AFL-CIO Local 2301, representing the professional supervisory white collar and blue collar units, to provide a subsequent election for a cost of living benefit and pop-up provision in the general employees pension plan, providing an effective date.
Okay, is this very similar, Mr. City Manager? No presentation, but we have our backup material. Okay. I'll now open up public input. Anyone wishing to speak on resolution 206-23, please come forward. Seeing none, public input is now closed. Is there a motion to approve resolution 206-23?
Motion approved, second.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Costin?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to item 10C, introductions. Ordinance 67-23, Madam City Clerk, please read title. Set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 67-23, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 7, purchase and sale of real and personal property, Sections 2-144, 2-151, 2-154, and 2-155 regarding the procurement process, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be August 30th, 2023.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance 66-23. Madam City Clerk, please read title. Set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 66-23, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral Land Development Code, Article 6, Parking, Chapter 1, Parking, Loading, and Driveway Requirements Regarding Parking Lot Site Requirements in the South Cape Zoning District, Providing Severability and an Effective Date. The public hearing will be September 6th, 2023.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, move on to ordinance 71-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title. Set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 71-23, an ordinance approving a public ingress and egress easement, utility easement, and construction and maintenance agreement between the City of Cape Coral, a Florida municipal corporation, and residents at Hibiscus Gardens LLC, a Florida limited liability company, granting a public ingress and egress easement, utility easement, and construction and maintenance agreement to residents at Hibiscus Gardens LLC, property located at 230 Burnt Store Road South, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be September 6th, 2023.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 11, reports. Councilmember Costin, report.
No report.
Councilmember Cummings, report.
No report, but I would like to say happy birthday to Councilman Shepherd. It's his birthday today, so I got to put it out there. You're welcome.
Okay, Councilmember Hayden, any birthdays?
I forgot about mine a long time ago, Mayor. I did attend Florida League of Cities Conference last week. Great sessions on artificial intelligence and the live local bill and others. Gained a lot of information on that, but I think what stood out was Saturday when our youth council participated with maybe six or seven other youth councils. There was probably 60 students in the room, but they were engaged from the beginning. They went around, they introduced themselves, the other councils, they asked the most questions during their pullout sessions. They continued to stay engaged. So I was really proud. I got up at, I think, 4:00 in the morning to drive over three hours to get up there, finished at 4:30, drove over three hours to get back. So a long day for them, but I was really proud about how they handled themselves, and they made Cape Coral very proud that day. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Long, report.
Yeah, just real briefly, Mayor, just a point of procedural inquiry, I guess, and maybe the city attorney can help us, whether this is something that I need a second for or how we would proceed. But in light of the way that some of the items were decided upon tonight, I think we need to try to decide how we want to move forward as far as requiring the applicants that come before us for some of these public hearings for zonings to submit their applications to be part of the backup material prior to the hearing. So in the instance of this evening, it would have been helpful to have that, for example, on a couple of different items. The presentations that were presented before us to have in the materials so that we could review them, not only ahead of time, but in the instance of them speaking and discussing while we review it. So in my profession, I appear before local planning agencies and boards and councils and hearings all over the state, and it is a common practice that they require of me that I present them my presentation that I am planning to present before whatever board that I'm appearing before up to seven days in advance, for that exact reason. So I think it would be incredibly helpful to have that. I don't know how we go about or what the mechanism would be to implement that if it's a consensus that we should do that.
If there's consensus, I think that direction can be made to the city manager and the city attorney. And in the event that there is not compliance with that direction, then it will be ultimately not really heard. And I'm okay with that. If you want to do a little bit of something more formal, there could be a document or a resolution ultimately adopted that sets forth that. That is your call. You don't have to do that. But if that is the consensus of the entire council, and that's the direction that's provided to the city manager, city attorney, that is something that we will abide by.
Is there anyone up here that feels like they wouldn't benefit from having that information available to them, especially in light of the fact that it's a common practice throughout the state?
Councilmember Hayden?
Yeah, you're right. I think to piggyback on that, though, that I would hope that if to the staff, the presentation would reflect that as well, because I don't think it did tonight, at least with that one, and I would like to see so that they kind of work in concert with each other so that we have the most up-to-date things. It did cause confusion tonight. It did cause confusion tonight, and I would hate to see that happen again in the future. I think, I think we learn from, learn from this, and I think we can make it better than what we saw tonight. Thanks.
And again, I'm, I'm very confident and comfortable, if you all want to memorialize that by a resolution, then there will be no question and no dispute, and that will be the document that it will control. That's certainly a great mechanism to let everyone know that that is the will of the, of the board, council, excuse me, and I'm, and I'm good with that. If you don't want to memorialize that, certainly we understand the direction given.
You got a recommendation there?
If staff doesn't need that memorialized, sure, if they're able to disseminate that information to the applicants and in the application materials, and they feel that they can do that without the need, sure, if we need a resolution, I'm sure that that would be pretty quickly put together. So I really don't have a preference. It would be up to staff at that.
Yeah, as long as we can still achieve our goal, you know, if, I think if the city attorney's office thinks it would be better for a resolution, you know, I'm sure we're all okay with that as well.
Okay.
So, you know, whatever, I think whatever you and the city manager feels is the best mechanism to put in place, would, to me, I would, I would go off your recommendations.
Understood. I think, I think we're pretty clear on it.
Okay.
Excellent.
Yep, and that's it, Mayor, thank you.
All right. And who else we have here? Councilmember Shepherd.
No.
The birthday boy. All right. Councilmember Welsh.
No report.
Uh, just to piggyback a little bit of what Councilmember Long had said, you know, I think it's very important for us to have as much information as possible and, and have it in a timely manner, because we all know that, at least, you know, for me, and I'm sure a lot of my colleagues, I'm doing my research way before I sit in this chair on a Wednesday. So having that information ahead of time will only be helpful. Secondly, as I had mentioned earlier in the conversation today, about changing things midstream, like the one applicant did, and I understand, you know, my, in speaking with Mr. Mazurkowitz was, you know, the reason that they kind of changed midstream is because didn't feel he had the votes on that particular topic at the time, so then they went back to the drawing board and tried to craft something that hopefully he could get five votes for. Unfortunately, I would rather see if we're going to do that, that we go back, give staff the opportunity to, to see exactly what the, what their ask is, what the change is, how it's going to impact us, instead of trying to do something on the fly. So I don't know how we, how we do that, but when you start trying to change things in the middle of the process, I think it makes it a little more difficult for us sitting up here. So whatever we need to do to try to rectify that.
Well, I certainly understand the, the information. I guess the first thing I'd like to know is, did anybody not have what they presented? Because my understanding was they, they sent it forward, so I want, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I got it, and I'm sure my colleagues did, but it's just not, for me anyway, it's just not for us. You need to have that opportunity.
Right, so what, what I, what I think we need to do, because when they change, right, staff's analysis was on the original.
Right.
And when they change it, we, we have not prepared a whole new staff analysis and run it through, you know, so my staff's recommendation was basically denial. So there was, from, from our perspective, there was no need to go through and analyze it because it, it was recommended for denial. But I, I hear what you're saying, and where we're going to be caught is in, in trying to be, there's a cost for them to submit and go through, you know, this entire process. And if we get to a point where we tell them, you have to stop, and now you're resubmitting a new one, then they're going to, you know, they're going to complain it's more costly, but maybe that, maybe that's the cost of business to see if what they submitted was going to pass.
So it's also in my journeys, it's not outside of the ordinary to just charge a fee, a smaller portion of the original fee for a second reiteration for staff to reevaluate that or an amendment.
That's where, that's where I was going. Do we, in, in light of trying to also remain business friendly, instead of kicking them out and having them restart, which I think if we're going to do that, then, then just getting direction is probably not going to be sufficient, because then we'd be looking at a, a new fee or an amendment, a smaller fee.
Yeah, so if, if, if the position of the, of the council is that, you know, we're not going to accept such late submissions because it's going to create a, a problem for us to evaluate that, then the real option is to essentially continue it to allow that reevaluation, then we want to memorialize that reevaluation with an additional cost, and that cost will be decided by you folks, whatever that may be. And as, as, as Councilmember Long mentioned, it could be a smaller version of the original fee, whatever, whatever that may be.
Right. I just think it's important because changing midstream, you know, we, council might have gotten that information. I, I don't know if staff got it, they had the time to analyze it, because we look for a recommendation from you as well and staff, so we want to make sure we're on an even playing field here and we're just not throwing something at us at the eleventh hour.
I'll work with the city attorney, we'll put together something, and we can add it to, if not the next cal, the following one for a review.
Okay, thank you. As far as reports, basically, the main one is I attended Florida League of Cities Annual Conference in Orlando with Councilmember Stanky, Councilmember Hayden, again, great event like it always is, our annual conference. Mr. City Attorney, report.
I mean, I've said quite a bit, I don't think you guys want to hear any more from me, but I don't have anything to report.
And welcome.
Thank you, thank you very much. It's been a exciting three days, to say the least.
It only gets better.
You know what, I, I look forward to the challenge, it's exciting.
Mr. City Manager.
To my toes.
I just wanted to welcome Alex as well, and now that I know about it, happy birthday, Councilmember Shepherd. I just have three small announcements. Friday, August eighteenth, we're going to host our fourth industry roundtable, business discussions. We are going to be at this session discussing the marine industries and what, what, how we can be more business-friendly to everything marine industry-related. We are also having development discussions, a webinar series beginning August twenty-third. This is a, the development discussion outreach initiative put forward by our Development Services Department, specifically interim director Juan, and that is going to be at nine AM Wednesday, August twenty-third, and will feature different topics throughout the months, discussing development discussions. And then lastly, we have a groundbreaking for the Cape Coral Police Training Facility that is this Friday, August eighteenth at nine AM, and the ceremony will be at ten-twenty, Kismet Parkway West. No reservations required to attend.
Is that all you have?
That's all, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Time and place, future meeting. Reminder that Cape Coral, the budget workshop scheduled for Tuesday, August twenty-second at two PM here in council chambers has been canceled. We also have a committee, the whole meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, August twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three at nine AM here in council chambers. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.[1752.66][1752.66]